Is everybody ready? Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Virginia City Council Chambers. We have two meetings to discuss here, first is a public hearing, and then immediately following the public hearing, we will have our regularly scheduled committee of home meeting. So I'm calling this notice of public hearing to order. Today's date is Tuesday, September 5, 2023. The time is 9:00 a.m. And notice was hereby given that the City Council of the City of Virginia, Minnesota, will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 5, 2023, at 9:00 a.m. at the Virginia City Council Chambers, 327 First Street South relating to the proposed city ordinance amending Chapter 6, Section 6.33, Subdivision 1 of the City Code of the City of Virginia entitled Tobacco. A copy of the proposed ordinance is on file and available for public inspection during regular business hours at the Office of the City Clerk at Virginia City Hall, 327 First Street South, Virginia, Minnesota, and on the city website at www.virginiamn.us. All interested persons may appear at the public meeting and present their views orally or in writing. And so here we have before us the ordinance that's proposed, and we'll go through this ordinance. On this public hearing, we'll take input from the public and from the council and move forward from there. But first, I would like to ask Pam, have there been any requests to appear today?
We received two notices, Mayor, regarding the smoking ordinance. One came in by email from Isaac Brink, and the other came from Gabe Garcia by email, and that was just sent to you about five minutes ago.
Okay, this is the one, should we read this in public then?
Yeah.
Thank you. The one I have is a smoking ordinance dated Tuesday, August 15 at 3:35 p.m. Came in from Mr. Isaac Brink, and it goes as regarding the subject is the smoking ordinance, and the email is as follows. Hello, I work at Subway and have had many complaints about the bench outside. Unfortunately, we have no say over that bench. Customers complain about how people sit there and smoke, which comes toward the store. People leave our store and get bombarded by cigarette smoke. If you are planning to enact a smoking ban anywhere, I would like to see the benches on Chestnut Street included in this. I unfortunately will not be able to attend any council meeting regarding this, but I hope you will consider my request. Thank you kindly. Signed Isaac, they slash him, and sent from his iPhone. And is there another one? And I didn't have it, so would you read it, please, the second one? Pam?
Actually, I can't. They're very small. So they were screenshots from Ben Garcia.
Okay, and he's here today?
He's here.
And well, maybe we'll have Mr. Garcia come up when it's time and give us an explanation of your email. Would you do that for us? Thank you. One moment, okay?
They were actual, following, it's from the Department of Agriculture with the guidelines for the seed sale.
Okay, very good. Thank you. We look for some clarification on that, so we look forward to your comments today, Mr. Garcia. Anybody from the council have anything they'd like to disseminate here about the smoking ordinance before we go to the general public for hearing testimony? Counselor Motley?
Well, in regards to the email you just read, I'm assuming if this ordinance goes into effect, that will include the benches in front of, or the bench in front of Subway because it's on the public sidewalk, where the police could enforce them not being allowed to smoke on that bench in front of Subway? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, and no counselors, any comments? Any other correspondence written or orally? None other than the ones, the two. Okay, so we're looking to get public comment about this ordinance, which is going to be Chapter 6, Section 633, Subdivision 1 of the City Code entitled Tobacco. Would anybody like to come up from the general public and share some information? Mr. Garcia, would you like to come forward and explain your email to us a little bit? Would you be willing to do so? Thank you. And if we just turn that podium light on, the microphone to green, and please state your name for the record and welcome to the public hearing.
Ben Garcia. So I just was going by the Department of Agriculture, what they have listed for retail sales of seeds. I tried to send it to you so you guys could get the information, but you couldn't read it or whatever. But if you go on the Department of Agriculture, they have it listed on there, what their guidelines are for selling seeds in Minnesota. I was just trying to relay them, information to you guys.
Okay.
That's basically it.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you'd like to say? Okay, and thank you, Mr. Garcia. Appreciate it very much. Any other comments from this audience regarding the tobacco ordinance? What we'll do is we'll take a look at this ordinance, and we take comments, and we continue to, we can continue to take comments after this public hearing is over. Is that correct? We will. And then once the, we take a look at this and we finalize this moving forward, it'll go to the City Council next Tuesday at 5:30. And part of that agenda will be to make a motion for the first reading of this ordinance. There's two readings, and then upon completion of the second reading, if there are no, with changes to the final adoption, would be the second reading of the City Council at the following City Council meeting, and then that will take effect 15 days after the final approval of the second reading before the ordinance will take effect. So does anybody have any questions or comments regarding this tobacco ordinance? Anything from staff? Britt? Colleen? I know that, um, Colleen Kovach, our, our city attorney, she was checking on the seed issue with our city attorney. I appreciate, Mr. Garcia, we appreciate you bringing that information to us moving forward, and so we're still trying to get some kind of a, an opinion about that, and we're hoping that the Assistant Chief could be here. They were doing some research on it as well.
Yeah, and Mayor, Councils, I apologize, I wasn't aware this was going to be an issue today. I've reached out to Brian Lindsay, I haven't heard back from him, but I am taking a look at the Minnesota Department of Agriculture requirements. If the council will permit, we can provide a more formalized report at the next meeting, if you like.
And I know there's something on the agenda for us to take action regarding the sale of these seeds as well, but we'll take into account all the information that's been disseminated today and the information that you provided us, Mr. Garcia, as well. Okay, is there anything else? Anybody like to comment about the tobacco ordinance of the public hearing? If not, we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Moved by Counsel Freely, been supported by Counsel Motley. Is there any further discussion? Hearing is seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. So with other comments that are made, we'll take into account all other communications moving forward, and if we need to make changes, we'll take a look at that. But the first reading, if is approved as proposed, will be taking place at their next City Council meeting next Tuesday. So thank you, everybody. This public hearing is now closed. Okay, we'll call the committee of home meeting to order. Today's date is Tuesday, September 5, 2023. The time is 9:10 a.m. We have a really full agenda today, and we'll turn our agenda over to our city administrator, Betsy Benness. Britt?
Thank you. First item on the agenda is Matt Reed from SCH, and his first item is to review and approve change order number one for the Alcott Park entrance project to extend the substantial completion date to September 15, 2023.
Thank you. Matt Reed, our engineer of record from SCH, good morning.
Morning. Yeah, so in front of you is, this is a paperwork exercise, there's no monetary changes. This was, as you recall, we were working on trying to get the funding finalized early in the spring, and so the contractor wasn't able to get started as soon as we'd have liked or as they would have liked. They've done an awesome job. If you guys have driven by that, it really looks nice. So they're just about done. They, they think most of it will be wrapped up this week. There'll be a few minor things, the letters going on, a couple of weeks out yet, and how they had to order them, but overall, it's gone really well. And so anyway, the request is just to change a substantial completion date on the project, and I suspect even they might be substantially complete by the end of this week, but, so if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. And I know, I had sent an email to you, Matt, regarding some, I guess, concerns that I had from a gal regarding crosswalk, a potential application of a crosswalk at the new entrance. And Matt and Jim Rossett both kind of responded that that location is actually for, for motorized traffic and not foot traffic. And so people that are coming across from the hospital or what have you to walk on the trail, I don't know if we need to address, there's a crosswalk closer to the cemetery, which is part of the Masabi Trail, and then there is also a crosswalk, obviously, at the set of stoplights. So I don't know if we want to address foot traffic, and if we're seeing a lot of that happening, that is pretty dangerous. People come speeding and driving pretty quickly over that area. So I don't know if you have any recommendations for us going forward regarding that.
Yeah, I can, I can reiterate, I guess, to the email that I had sent to Counsel Paulson. I don't, I wouldn't recommend putting a crosswalk there, for sure. That's, there's control, there's a controlled intersection a little ways down at the stoplight, like Counsel Paulson had referenced. There is a crossing a little farther to the west where the Masabi Trail actually crosses, but I wouldn't recommend putting a crosswalk in there and encouraging people to walk across the street right there. Like you said, it's busy, there's cars there, and people are going to do it. It's no different than any other place in town where people cross where there's no crosswalks, but they're kind of doing it at their own risk at that point. So that'd be my recommendation to not put something there.
And I guess, thank you so much for addressing that.
I just also wanted to address the email concern that I had received from the constituent that sent it to me, and as to why, I guess, the thought process, why not put a crosswalk in there. But I think what I would like to see, maybe during some of our events, like Land of the Loon, or Brew Fest, or some of those bigger events, maybe the ability of those organizers to have workers maybe with a slow or a caution or a walk sign if people are going to be coming across. I don't know if that would be a recommendation, but just if we are doing events where people are using those, the parking lot across on the north side, south side of the hospital, north side of Alcott Park, that maybe we could help with some safety precautionary measures. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Counsel Paulson. I think we have done it in the past, there's been some events that are going on where they had a controlled intersection there when people were overflow parking in a lot there, so that makes a lot of sense as well, so, thank you. Okay, has been moved and supported to approve the change order, which is no change to the change order, just a matter of, we don't have a motion yet? Well, then let's have one.
I'll make that motion.
Counsel Motley makes the motion. Is there support?
Support.
By Counsel Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing is seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. The second item for Matt is review the proposal for reconstructing the sanitary sewer main beneath the school.
Matt?
So we've talked about this a couple of different times now as well. I think this is for the sanitary sewer line going beneath the current Virginia High School, and there has been some back and forth on, should we do anything with that pipe now since they're in there doing work? Or do we, do we need to? Do we not need to? Jim had the, both the sanitary and the storm sewer televised. Storm sewer looks like it's in pretty decent shape, and we probably don't need to do anything with it at this time. It's in a condition that if we need to do something later on, we could just probably line it, so we wouldn't have to do any digging, so we don't think we have to do anything there. The sanitary sewer, on the other hand, is not, is in, is not in as good of shape. It's clay tile pipe, it's got some cracks, it's got a few areas where it looks like there might be, might be getting ready to break, there's some plug lines in there. So we're recommending, at least from our perspective at this point, now would be the time to fix that. When they're in there digging already, they're, the equipment's there, everything's there. So we had Kraus Anderson, excuse me, provide us with a, with an estimate for that, and that's what's in your packet. The one thing I will note, that I was trying to get some clarification on this morning, is they did note a 12-inch pipe, and that actually probably should be a 10-inch pipe. So I guess where I'm going with that is that that should be a little less expensive than, not significantly, but a little less expensive, but I'm trying to confirm that. So if the council chooses to move forward with that today, I would just approve it as is, and then if we can, if it comes in a little bit cheaper, that would be a good thing. So I can answer any questions you might have related to that, too.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, but I'll defer it to the rest of the council. That's an opportunity we had. Counsel Johnson?
Thank you. What would the timeline be for doing this project? And will we be able to get the stuff in time to not interfere with the rest of the construction?
Yeah, their, their plan was to do it, my understanding was towards the end of September, first part of October, and they thought as long as we got going and got approvals quickly here, they could get the manholes ordered. That's probably going to be the biggest lead time is to get the manholes ordered, so, but they figured they could get it done by then.
Okay. And then is there money in the sewer fund for this project? Because that's where it would come out of.
Matt, you're talking about $85,000, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was proposed that we would do an internal loan against ourselves and pay ourselves back.
Okay. And that payment would come from sewer funds and collected from the users thereof. Okay, those were my, my three questions. I think it makes sense to do it now, because once they tear the buildings down and landscape it, now we're paying extra for landscaping and everything else, so I'd be supportive of this. It's to save us money in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Johnson. I just have a question and a comment, too. So the question is, is that, is the school, is there any other, are they going to contribute to the costs associated with this? Have we had any discussions with the school about this?
This is, excuse me, this is actually a city main. I would say the school's contribution would be sort of what Steve referred to, all of the restoration that the city would not have to pay for, that normally if you were to go in there and dig it up, you would have to pay for. So a direct compensation to pay for the pipe, there has been no indication that they'd contribute to that.
And the only reason I ask that question is that if the school wasn't reconstructed, we wouldn't be doing anything. However, after investigating it, we did come to a determination that, you know, we do need to do something. So yeah, I understand this is a city issue, we're just looking to see if there's going to be any specific contribution other than what you've described. So if that answers my question, thank you. Counsel Beyondich?
You were mentioning the 12-inch, the cost of a 12-inch to a 10-inch. Do you know what the cost difference would be?
No, it'll be a few thousand dollars, I would imagine. It won't be real significant. It's, the labor is going to be the same, it's just the pipe material is going to be a little, or the pipe size will be a little smaller, so it should be a little less cost, but I don't know. I'm trying to get that answer.
Thank you.
It won't be more, or we'll go with the 12-inch.
Thank you, Matt. Any other questions? Counsel Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. So Matt, is TNT the current subcontractor for K8 during, during work for Rock Ridge?
Yes.
Okay, so, so the supplemental agreement or this bid is coming from TNT as an, like an add-on?
No, because K8's contract is with the school.
Right.
So because they were on site, K8 worked with their sub to get a quote for the city. This would be a direct bill to the city, I believe.
Okay, so when I'm reading the supplemental agreement, it just says project owner of Rock Ridge Public Schools, so is there, did I miss something that's in the packets, that it's between the city of Virginia?
I can confirm that, Counsel Paulson. They might be doing a change order under their contract, and then the school might send the city a bill. That could, that's a possibility.
So, okay, so if you, if we could find that out, I'd appreciate that. And then Sheri, could you maybe just explain what you, okay, what did you mean by, do we have the money in the sewer fund, or what do you mean by we're taking out a?
We have an, Mayor?
Sheri?
Counsel Paulson, we have investments. We have over $300,000 in the general fund investment in the money market right now, and we also have the sewer fund investment of 3.2 million. And these are investments. So if we would take anything, we'd take it out of the general fund and working with Mia Thibault to do an internal loan, set that up, so that we pay ourselves back monthly.
So we'd be pulling money out of our investments to reimburse the general fund?
To re, no, no. These are pulling money out of the general fund investments. These are investments to do this project, $85,000. And then you have an overlay of street project coming up, and that's what we have anticipated.
So I'm just concerned that we don't have the money currently budgeted for $83,375. So we'll be doing a loan back to ourselves to pay.
Correct.
So we don't have that, it's not a budgeted item for 2023 fiscal year.
We weren't aware of this until, what?
Right.
Months ago?
Right.
So we have investments there for that purpose.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Paulson. Thank you. Counsel Johnson?
I will move that we allow the staff to move forward with the sewer project utilizing the plan that Sheri proffered for payment.
A motion by Counsel Johnson to approve, is there support? Support by Counsel Freely. Is there any further discussion? Counsel Beyondich?
Thank you. And when, so I'm, I'm still concerned about not having money, basically.
And the problem is, once the school builds over this line, for us to reconstruct it later is going to be extremely more costly, like millions more costly. So this is kind of one of those, this is the time we need to do this, is now. And we had already agreed to move the $600,000 over to cover the reconstruction project that we're doing this year, which we only need $333,000 for. So we'd already agreed to move that money over, this is just coming out of that same fund.
I'll, I'll probably address more at the budget meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Counsel Johnson?
Mayor, and, thank you, Mayor. Matt, I think that was going to, my, my next question is, if this were a standalone project, do you have a ballpark figure what it would be for mobilization and all of that stuff as opposed to this?
I don't off the top of my head, to be honest with you, but it would be, it would be significantly more. We'd have all the restoration costs, we'd be disrupting the, the school grounds, we'd be, there's, there's, even, even direct costs aside, there'd be inconveniences that would come of it. It just, and, and likely the unit price would be more, because the contractor wouldn't be on site, you'd have a mobilization cost. So it would, I don't really know what that cost would be, Counsel Johnson, but it would be, definitely be more.
I'm just trying to weigh those pros and cons, and, for 427 feet, I think this is, based on other stuff we've been doing in town, this is kind of a screaming deal for us, and again, it's not about what's happening today or tomorrow, but in five years or 10 years, when it does fail or does need to be readdressed, now we're digging up a well-established playground or something, you know, I know the playground's not going to be directly over, but this is kind of in the middle of the school property, is that correct? So I can anticipate us splitting the playground from the rest of the school. I just think this is the right time, and that we have the ability to borrow from our investments to, to pay for it, I think is the right option at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Johnson. Counsel Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I think where I feel comfortable right now is just voting no until I get some of those questions answered a little bit better, not stopping it from moving forward because we're not spending money today, but I just would like some more questions answered before our City Council meeting on Tuesday. Thank you.
Okay, Matt?
I can answer one of your questions. It will be a law, it will be a bill from the school. K8 did not mark up TNT's, there's no markup on it. It's a direct pass-through, I just got that answered. So that's one of your answers you were looking for.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments before we vote? Counsel Beyondich?
Because our, our next meeting is a special meeting on the budget, would this be able to be moved to that meeting so we can vote on? I mean, I just, I feel like I need to go through that budget meeting before I approve any more spending. Would we be able to do that?
We can do whatever you'd like, yes.
So we can move it to the next meeting at 1:00, where we go through our budget and can understand a little bit more?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
There's a motion on the floor to move it and prove it forward. We need, we need a tabling motion to move it to 1:00.
I will make that tabling motion to move it to our budget meeting so we can discuss it fully there.
Okay, Counsel Beyondich makes a motion to table. Is there support?
I'll support that.
Support by Counsel Motley. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Roll call, please.
Johnson?
No.
Aaron Zelli?
No.
Cuffey?
No.
Motley?
Yes.
Freedleeb?
No.
Paulson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Motion fails. I'm sorry. Who?
Yes.
Motion fails. Thank you. Okay, so.
Call for the question.
We go back to the original motion, okay? Moved and supported to move this project forward. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Okay, roll call, please.
Aaron Zelli?
Yes.
Cuffey?
Yes.
Motley?
No.
Freedleeb?
Yes.
Paulson?
No.
Beyondich?
No.
Johnson?
Yes.
A motion passes for three. Thank you. Anything else, Matt? Any other questions from Mr. Reed before we go on to the next item? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Item number two is Paul Christensen from People Service regarding wastewater treatment plant upgrades. The first one is a diffuser upgrade, aeration diffuser upgrade. I apologize.
Good morning, Mr. Christensen.
Good morning, Mayor Cuffey and Counsel. Paul Christensen, People Service. I'm, before this morning, we were looking to upgrade some diffusers at the wastewater plant. Thirty percent of the diffusers were done in the last couple of years, and what we're finding is that's creating an imbalance in the aeration, which then in order to mix the tank thoroughly, we have to increase the amount of electricity used. So we're feeling, in the, we are of the opinion that this diffuser upgrade is going to pay for itself within a year. I've got two proposals in front of you. One from SSI Aeration in the amount of $15,200. I did make a phone call this morning to verify that the price is still valid, and it is. We have a second quote in front of you from Duncan Company in the amount of $22,075. People Service would recommend that you proceed with the SSI Aeration quote in the amount of $15,200. And on top of that, there will be some People Service costs for installation. We anticipate between $2,000 and $3,000 labor costs of People Services and extra billing. And again, we are not getting the right amount of aeration mixing right now, and so we do feel that the project is necessary, and it will self-fund in your electrical savings, and also we feel we'll, we'll have some improved chemical use efficiency with that rare earth product for the phosphorus removal. Are there any questions I can answer for the council at this time?
Thank you. Counsel Johnson?
Which part is this? Is it the round buildings, or what are we talking about specifically?
This is where all the bubbles are.
Okay.
The aeration tanks. So right there, it's the first tank that you see when you enter, the big rectangular tanks, they're parallel tanks next to each other.
Yep.
With the blowers sitting there, and I'm standing there in the parking lot, and I can hear those blowers winding up, and we're running a much higher dissolved oxygen level than we normally would.
And I appreciate that. Couple of years ago, you gave me, I gave me a full tour of the whole buildings facility, so this really helps to be able to visualize.
Yeah.
So this is towards the beginning of the process, or is it more in the middle?
This is the biological part of the process, so it's immediately after the primary clarifiers. And then this is where all the, the bacteriological activity happens.
Okay.
And so the aeration provides, uh, it introduces the bacteria and the wastewater pollutants together.
And I appreciate that. I'm picturing where we were, and so I appreciate that. And if, uh, if you feel that we're gonna be able to pay for it within a year just by savings, I think that is significant because the longer we put it off, the more we're paying to, and it's just a matter, I'm guessing the other seventy percent of the diffusers are gonna be an emergency fix as opposed to a proactive fix at this point?
Correct. This is a proactive.
Okay.
It's, there's a mix, there's an old-style diffuser and then these new-style diffusers, and they're not interacting very well. The new diffusers, the thirty percent that have been replaced already, we'll retain those, but the air prefers to go out of those. There's less resistance on those diffusers. So thirty percent of the tank is getting the air versus one hundred percent of the tank.
Right. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Well, thank you. I just have one question for you, Mr. Christensen. So, uh, you, you explained that these are new diffusers as opposed to the old diffusers. So my, so they, you want them all to interact together, so the new diffusers will interact with the old diffusers, right? Uh, you'll get, so, I guess my question is, when it comes time to replace the diffusers, would you replace the thirty percent ones, or would they all have to be replaced at the same time?
We are replacing the seventy percent to match the thirty percent that's already been done.
Thank you.
So we'll retain the value you've already spent in the thirty percent, and we'll just finish the job ahead of schedule because they're not, the mix of the two types of diffusers is not working very well.
That clarifies things for me. Thank you. Uh, Councilor Freedleeb?
I would like to move forward the approval of the bid, the lower bid recommended by Mr. Christensen.
Support? Uh, Councilor Freedleeb moves to approve the quote on the aeration diffuser upgrades, supported by Councilor Johnson, to SSI in the amount of fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars plus installation by People Services. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Biondich?
This will come from the sewer fund? Or the, and we have money in there. We're not gonna be transferring, we're, there's money in that fund.
It'll come from the sewer fund?
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
Repeat that, please, Sheri, so we can all hear.
This will come from the sewer fund.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilor, uh, Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. For, just for clarification, Paul, so in your estimation, by spending, doing this expenditure now, within one year, we, we should, um, I guess, break even on that purchase?
That, that is my estimation.
Okay.
And it's a rough estimation, but electrical is a major expenditure in the operation of your wastewater treatment facility, as is the RE300. And so I think we're spending, uh, close to a hundred thousand dollars a year just on the RE300 right now. So just a fifteen percent savings on that chemical would pay for these aerators, just on the savings on the chemical.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Uh, thank you, Councilor Paulson. Okay, it has been moved and supported to approve. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next one?
Next one is the SCADA server replacement project. This one we've been working on for quite a while, actually, um, between Public Works and myself. It's, it's such a specialized system, we were only able to get one quote. Um, no, we reached out to numerous vendors and we were not able to, um, get any other quotes for it. Unfortunately, it's a very high price. It is forty-four thousand, twenty-eight dollars.
Forty-four thousand, twenty-eight dollars?
Correct.
And there was only one quote received?
We could only retain one quote, yes.
Okay. And so, give us a little, uh...
Existing servers we have, and they were installed in 2023.
I'm sorry?
The existing servers we have were installed in 2023, so they're ten years old, and they're out of date.
What, 2013?
I'm sorry, 2013, yes.
Oh, okay, very good. Thank you. And the, the service, need to be replaced. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yep.
And, uh, this money will come from where? Sheri?
Britt, is this in the sewer budget?
Correct.
Under maintenance?
Yes.
And we, do we have that budgeted for?
We've been working on this for a couple of years. We've been trying to get quotes for this.
That's right.
For at least since 2021, if not 2022.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I will move the proposal forward.
Uh, Councilor Johnson moves to approve the quote for the WWTF SCADA server replacement project, and the one quote received in the amount of forty-four thousand, twenty-eight dollars. Is there support? Or support by Councilor Freedleeb? Is there any further discussion? Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. So if you look on the exclusions, um, there's bullet points that say what's excluded, and there's quite a lot that is excluded. Removal demolition or disposable, disposal of existing equipment, fasteners or mounts, wire, uh, electrical studies, tests, network media or testing, shipment or services, shipping, or any equipment or services that are not defined, shipping costs to locations. So I want to know what the, if those exclusions have to be included, what is going to be our actual landed cost?
Those exclusions are fine. We, we have no problem with that.
So there won't be any additional?
No, no, the forty-four thousand, twenty-eight is what we...
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilor Paulson. Uh, has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Freedleeb?
Oh.
Nope, we're good. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Christensen. We appreciate you very much.
Item number three is coming from the Parks and Recreation Department, and we've got a long list from Mr. Brian Silver, our Parks and Recreation Director. Um, the first one is discuss, approve the proposed rental rate increase for the Iron Trail Moors Event Center.
Uh, Councilor?
Morning, Council. Back this past winter...
Please, hold on one moment.
Yes.
I apologize for that, Brian. Councilor Paulson, you had your light on.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, prior to our meeting, I kind of had mentioned to, um, our city administrator and our mayor that, um, in light of our budget discussion occurring at one o'clock this afternoon, that, um, I don't know what the rest of the council feels like, but, um, I would like to pull items three A, three B, item four, eight A, and eight B, uh, off of our committee of the whole agenda and table that, I don't know if the, if I don't, if I don't know if I need to table it or move it to the following committee of the whole after we have our budget discussion at one PM today. So I don't know if I need to make a tabling motion. I don't know, Colleen, if that's the right motion to make, table until the following committee of the whole on those specific items for discussion after we do have our budget discussion today at one o'clock.
Yeah, Councilor Paulson, that sounds correct to me. Basically, um, you're not wanting to take it off the radar, you're wanting to keep it in play, but you want additional time to discuss things at the budget meetings, I understand.
That would be correct, and that would be my motion, Mayor.
So, thank you. And just to clarify, uh, for, for all of us and for Pam, uh, you're making a motion to move, uh, the discussion of, uh, under billion grounds, A and B, item number four, and under personnel, item eight A and eight B, to move it from the committee whole agenda to our budget meeting agenda?
Not to our budget meeting agenda, to the next committee of the whole agenda. Yep, I just feel like it's, it would be more prudent after we talk about all of our budgetary, where we're gonna end, wind up with our 2024 budget. We need to kind of sort that out and then come back to the table with discussing these, um, one, two, three, fi- five items. And most of these would be either expenditures, or they are going to be adjustments in rates that may be affected according, uh, to where we fall with our 2024 budget discussion. So rather than having to change things maybe twice, maybe we have our budget discussion and then revisit those five items.
And then, and then we move those five items to the next committee of the whole meeting?
Correct.
That is your motion?
Correct.
Which would be to the next committee of the whole meeting, which would be scheduled for September the nineteenth?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion on the floor by Councilor Paulson to move items, uh, A, three A and B, item number, of number four, and item number, uh, eight A and B, that's currently on the committee whole agenda, uh, move that to our budget discussions, and then, and, uh, and then on to this committee of the whole meeting, which is scheduled for September eighteenth, is it? September nineteenth. Is that correct?
That would be correct.
A move by Councilor, uh, Paulson, is there support?
I'll support.
A support by Councilor Motley. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Mayor, point of order. Is this a tabling motion or, I, I'm confused to the, if it's a tabling?
Oh, I apologize. What was that? What's the deal? What?
If, if it's tabling, then there's no discussion, but if it's a different type of motion, then we can, and I'm confused what we're doing.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, Colleen, for, for the rest of our clarification, it's not a tabling motion, it's a motion to move.
Move it.
Move it. So, uh, could you please, uh, give us a little explanation of the, the difference? It's not a tabling motion, we're just moving this to a discussion, uh, to the budget committee, and then, uh, then move that to the committee of the whole meeting of, after the budget meeting for the next committee of the whole meeting. Is that, we can do that?
Yes, you can.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that clarification. Um... All right, I, I need to thank, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Uh, okay, thank you. Uh, any, uh, it has been moved and supported, uh, I'll repeat one more time, uh, to move item under billion grounds, under park and rec, item A and B, and item number four, and then under personnel, item eight A and eight B, to, uh, the budget discussion at one o'clock, and eventually move that back on to the committee whole agenda, which is scheduled for September the nineteenth of this, of this month. Is there any further discussion? Uh, Councilor Freedleeb?
So I would just ask Sheri and Britt, are you prepared to add these things to the presentation you were gonna make at one o'clock? Is that gonna take you off balance, uh, with regard to what we were gonna be discussing, or is it just something that we can add to it and move forward with?
I'm prepared.
Uh...
Can I clarify, Mayor? Point of clarification?
Yes, uh, clarification, please, Councilor Paulson?
Motion is to, um, move it to the next committee of the whole on the nineteenth, not have any discussion. We will, we're gonna have our budget discussion going through probably department by department as much as we can at one o'clock, but I'd like to bring these five items for, back for discussion at the next committee of the whole.
Oh, so the clarification is, is you want this moved to the budget discussion, you just want to move these items to the next committee of the whole meeting?
Correct.
So would that require a tabling motion or not?
You can do it either way. I mean, you can table it, and then it could appear on the next one, or you can specifically move it.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to move it to the next committee of the whole meeting. Okay, who, who made the support of that? Uh, Councilor Motley. So it's not gonna be discussed at the budget. This is, this, these items will be moved to the next committee of the whole meeting, which is scheduled for September nineteenth. In light of our budget discussions at one o'clock, we'll discuss, uh, a right of other things, but these particular items will be moved under the, under the motion to the next committee of the whole meeting. So that's the clarification, moving it to the next committee of the whole meeting. So it has been moved and supported. Hopefully, I'll have clarification on that. Is there any further discussion? Uh, hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Uh, okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Cuffey?
Aye.
Motley?
Yes.
Freedleeb?
Paulson? Aye.
Biondich?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Aaron Zelli?
Yes.
Uh, motion, uh, passes five to two. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the next item that Brian...
Thank you, Brian.
Brian has is discuss from review the proposed draft of the Virginia tree policy.
Okay. Go ahead, Brian. I have one comment about that. Go ahead. Brian?
All right. Um, for the past several months, the Virginia Tree Board, AKA the Park and Rec Commission, has been reviewing and drafting a new Virginia tree policy. Uh, this is the current draft that the Tree Board has come up with. It is their desire for the city council to schedule a public input meeting so that the public has time to review this document and make comments, and then if staff and the Tree Board determine that further revisions need to be made, they can be made at that time prior to the council taking any action on this tree policy.
Okay, thank you. I, I had a chance to review the policy, uh, at length and on a number, we went to it a lot of times. So it's a, it's a big policy.
It is a very in-depth policy.
In-depth policy, and I'm, and it took a lot of research and to do this. Uh, and I, and I applaud the Park and Rec Commission for doing so. Uh, so, uh, the policy that's being, uh, proposed seems more like an ordinance, but this is a policy, not an ordinance. So the one question that I have, and part of it, and I'm sorry I didn't write the subsection, I left it downstairs in the office, um, of the clarification of the policy to require, if, if that's the proper term, uh, it's written in the proposed policy, for residents to maintain the trees on the boulevard in front of their house. Now, I don't know if we could mandate that even under policy. That would have to be an ordinance, and, and how we would require the general public, private residents or businesses to maintain a tree on city property in the boulevard. So that's my only comment, uh, moving forward. So when you have the public input, I think that might be some of the, uh, that might be a comment that may be, uh, repeated on a number of occasions when we have this, should we have this meeting. So that's my only comment about the tree policy. Uh, Colleen? Now, I don't know if we could mandate that even under policy. That would have to be an ordinance and how we would require the general public, private residents or businesses to maintain a tree on city property in the boulevard. So that's my only comment moving forward. So when you have the public input, I think that might be some of the, that might be a comment that may be repeated on a number of occasions when we have this, should we have this meeting. So that's my only comment about the tree policy. Colleen?
Yeah, and Mayor, and kind of piggybacking off that comment, I noted that there were some requirements of tree protection in Section 5, and then there's penalties. So again, those are basically criminal violations that people will be cited with. So that would need to be in part of an ordinance to be enforceable.
Yeah, and that was my concern. That was my next comment as well.
That was Section 6.
Yes, thank you for that. Yeah, I think some of it is more ordinance-based as opposed to policy-based. So we have to vet that out as well. Thank you for that, Colleen.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, please.
The Tree Board did use the existing city ordinance, did refer to that. So a lot of these things from the city ordinance were essentially copied and pasted into this policy so that the policy and the ordinance would mesh together.
Yeah, and under the circumstances, we already have a tree ordinance, right?
Yes.
So maybe the entitled tree policy should be tree ordinance. But anyway, we'll work through that. So yeah, thank you for that, Brian, and for that clarification. Again, I applaud all the hard work. Counselor Johnson?
And that was similar to my question about do we need to be adjusting the ordinance and just do a better job of publishing what the process is or create the policy and then just put see city ordinances accordingly? Because the whole purpose of this came about, if I remember correctly, because we needed to take down some trees in some neighborhoods because of their age and safety concerns. And some citizens had some concerns about how that selection process happened. And the process was a teamwork between Public Works and Parks and Rec because Parks and Rec does have the ultimate authority with trees in town. And so moving forward, I think that we've accomplished what the original intent was. I would like to see a policy that is easier to read for the general public, something that we refer them to the online or they can get a copy from the city via email or mail, but something that makes it a lot easier that you can't plant a tree unless or how or that. So I'd like to see that happen, a much more condensed handout kind of thing that if we need to adjust the ordinance to include this and then the ability for us to answer questions and for both you and the Parks and Rec Director and the Public Works Director to be able to say, this is what we follow and hand out that sheet of paper with those references, I think is a much more prudent use of your time instead of handing people a policy that's multiple pages. And in lawyer speak, no offense, Colleen. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Counselor Beyondich?
And when I've looked through this, a couple of issues have come up. I know I had citizens in the neighborhood concerned about tapping of the tree, the city trees. And we've talked about that. Part of the ordinance that I've read on the trees, which this is very detailed, thank you, on the ordinance part, it's like who is following through on the ordinance as to trees visually into the intersection or into the alleyways? So there are some things that I think are in the ordinance, not that the ordinance is actually followed up on. So those are some of my concerns that people have come to me with. But I appreciate all the work that went into this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Beyondich. Anyone else? So you're asking for us to review and input. This is our initial review of the tree policy and some of our inputs about what we like to talk about moving forward. And so you're asking, and the Park and Rec Commission is asking, for the city council to set up a listening session or to talk about the tree policy. And during the course of that discussion from the public, get public input would be, you know, should this be the form of a policy or an ordinance? So we'll work through all that. But your goal and objective here is to get, for us to review it and for us to schedule a public input meeting at some point in time here.
That is correct.
Thank you. So I'm assuming we'll want to set that up sooner than later as we move forward with the tree policy. We don't want it sitting on the back burner. So trying to schedule a time for that would be. Could we do that? Well, let's have a motion to set public input to hearing, if we may, or unless there's other comments before we do so.
I'll make the motion to direct staff to set up a input meeting with the Tree Board present to answer any other questions we might have.
Okay, thank you. And we would encourage all the Park and Rec Commissioners to be there as well. So it's been moved by Counselor Johnson. Is there support?
All support for discussion.
By Counselor Motley for discussion. Further discussion, Counselor Motley.
Just because I am the Parks and Rec liaison, I've sat through these meetings and they have worked very diligently for months. So I just want to thank all the commissioners for their hard work with this particular subject. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So it has been moved and supported to direct staff to schedule a public input hearing regarding the tree policy. And we'll have all our members present there to accomplish that. So is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is Brian again. It's to approve the resolution to apply for and receive grant funds from the Minnesota State Historical Society to hang the Dwayne Byers mural at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center.
So moved. Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
By Counselor Paulson. Further discussion? I don't want to muddy up the waters, but I just got to make this comment. I don't know why we have to go through the Minnesota Historical Society to erect this thing, but there we are. But has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Motley?
So I was just looking up on this. So if we apply, they apply for the grant and we get the $90,000, then where does the other $10,000 come from?
My idea for that is coming here in a few more item agendas, but do you have a potential source for the matching funds for that?
Thank you.
Thank you. Brian, any further comments before we approve?
Did want to clarify one of your concerns. We don't have to get Minnesota Historical Society's permission to hang this. They have a grant available that will help us pay for the cost of hanging this.
I retract my comments. It's for grants only, so thank you. It's moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. The next one is to discuss the proposed facilities use agreement with ISG 2909 Rock Ridge Public Schools.
Brian?
So as I was directed by counsel quite a while ago to enter into discussion with the school for a facility use agreement for the Iron Trail Motors Event Center for boys and girls hockey, we have worked through that. The agreement that is in your packet is the agreement that the school board did approve this past, their past school board meeting, which was last Monday night, I believe. It is only a one-year agreement. Staff's process in doing this is we met with Building and Grounds Committee to get Building and Grounds Committee's input on the structure and everything for the contract. So the structure and the rates that went through this all came through the Buildings and Grounds Committee. Essentially, what this agreement will end up doing is we'll bring both the boys' and the girls' high school programs to the event center as their permanent home. They will each play up to five games at, five home games at the Hippodrome. But all of their practices, except for maybe the practice before the game at the Hippodrome, will be in our facility. We've already worked with our other user groups to make sure that this is something that we can do within the facility. So I would make a recommendation that the council approves this agreement moving forward. It does generate additional revenue compared to what was generated in the last school board meeting for the simple, or in the last school contract for the simple fact that they will be utilizing more hours in the facility than they have previously.
Thank you, Brian. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Brian, just for clarification, so the total contract, and this is just for the, for the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, is that?
That is correct. This is just for hockey in the event center.
Yep. Okay, so it's $72,650?
No, it is not. We will bill them monthly for what they have used. They are committing to us a amount of ice time that they anticipate using. Now, a good athletic director will plan for both the boys' and the girls' to make that run to state. Now, that always doesn't work out. You don't always go to state. So as soon as a team unfortunately gets eliminated, then they will release that ice time to us. And then we can sell that ice time to another customer, such as youth hockey. We do not bill them then for that ice time that they are not using. So I can't tell you the exact dollar figure. They will be being billed this year $120 per hour for the ice time that they are being used. Then we are also providing them a dedicated boys' varsity, a dedicated boys' JV, a dedicated girls' varsity, a dedicated girls' JV, dedicated boys' coaches, dedicated girls' coaches' office, and a shared training room. Each of those items has a monthly, I guess you could say, fee or lease attached to it because those are dedicated rooms that only their program is using.
Thank you for that explanation. So just so I understand, so $72,650 would be the max if they used all the hours?
Quite possibly, yes.
About that? Okay. And then, so the other question that I have is, so you also have the 25, 26 season in here?
That was included because we were initially proposing a three-year agreement. The school board did not want a three-year agreement. So the 24, 25, and 25, 26 rates will not apply. We did tell them that those rates were only if they did a three-year agreement. This is just a one-year agreement so that we get to go through this whole process again.
Fun. So I guess what I just want to clarify is that we're not locked into the rates that you have listed in this. And we need to pull that out as this part of the contract that's in our packet. It might be just an addendum.
Page 58.
I'm on page 57.
I don't know how page, page 57, yeah, page.
58.
Page B3 or page 57 of the packet should not be there. It is page 58 or B4.
Very good.
That is the, what should be in the contract.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Mayor.
At the same time, if this is approved, I would appreciate the council also making a separate motion to direct me to begin contract discussions for the 24, 25 because, as you can see, it takes a while to do these things.
Thank you. So Counselor Motley?
So you said it was page 58, which is B4?
Yes, ma'am.
That says the 2022, 23 school year?
Oh, that is correct.
And then also, I thought you said it was $120 an hour. This says $115.
Yes. That may be what they, we were referencing was last year. But yes, it would be, just be that top section that should be in this.
As we get that.
We can clarify that also with the school.
$120 an hour and then 23 to 24 school year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Motley. And that'll be reflected in the final contract for the council meeting next Tuesday. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate that this is coming to us literally at the beginning of the school year this year and not three days before the hockey season starts. So I appreciate you and your staff's hard work to get this to this point. So I will make a motion to accept or to offer the, approve the 23, 24 single-year agreement with Rock Ridge Public Schools for use of hockey facilities.
Moved by Counselor Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Motley. Is there any further discussion? I'm just going to withhold some of my comments because, just because there's some issues that I still have with respect to how this contract comes to bear. Appreciate all our hard work about how we do this together. But this is a one-year contract, and I'm going to support it because it's for only one year. But you have to do this contract all over again. And so, yes, the school board makes the decision on what they want, and we provide them what they're asking for and based upon a fees associated with that, which you've conducted, and we're going to be likely approving that to go to the council meeting for further, for a final approval. But this is a lot of work for a one-year contract, and so we'd like to hold them to more than that. And I know there's reasons why the school board does that based upon conversations with many. And it's about, it's still the issue of, you know, who plays where? You know, all that argument about playing at the Hippodrome or playing the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. I just want to make clear, particularly to one specific individual who thinks that Virginia is trying to bully everybody. And that's the comment I got publicly while I'm at a public event or a private event. And so the issue is, it's $120 for ice time, not $220, not $210. It's $120 ice time. This was negotiated for one year. I'm anticipating that because it's still growing pains with the school, that we may be looking at a longer-term contract. I don't think going on a year-to-year basis is as well for us at all and puts a lot of burden on our staff to which to do that. But because it's your recommendation moving forward and it's agreement to finally, we're able to bring together with the school board, I just want to clarify the fact that, you know, the information that some citizens have, it's inaccurate. It's $120 an hour. So I just want to make that clear to the public. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Beyondich?
Thank you. And I appreciate all the work you do on that. But if I recall, the last year when we were at the same point, because it is a one-year contract, were we able to fill any slots? Because we were going to still go out and approach or entertain other users for that ice time.
Yeah, I'm not worried about filling winter ice. We could add a third sheet of ice and fill it during the wintertime. So there is not a, we probably actually have a lack of available indoor ice for our region. So filling our ice, especially with our existing partners, youth hockey, the high school, in discussing potential junior hockey franchise, all of the, our concern is not having enough ice available for everybody. So I'm not worried, even with the high school, when they get eliminated from the playoffs and release that ice. Last year when that happened, youth hockey was reaching out before the high school had officially released that ice, letting me know this is how we will schedule it.
So when this contract is up, I guess what I'm asking is, are other people in the wings waiting so we don't have to go through a one-year contract every time? Are there opportunities to use that ice time for something else because they're choosing to do one-year contracts?
I would not want to use that as a negotiating strategy with the school of if you don't sign a long-term contract with us, we'll go to somebody else. I think the city of Virginia should have a good working relationship with the school. That's not my style to make that threat, but if that is the council's directive for us to go in that direction, then that is something that we can and probably should be looking at.
And I'm not necessarily suggesting that. I'm just asking, I know last year we ran into the same thing. And it's, and I agree, the one-year contract, year-to-year, is a difficult thing to have to go through each year. So I was just asking the question if we had, if anybody else had reached out to use that ice time.
And I guess the answer to that would be yes. At the last council meeting, you approved us to enter into negotiations with an unnamed junior hockey franchise to consider relocating to our arena.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Paulson. I mean, Counselor Beyondich, I apologize. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is review the recommendation to name the new stage at the Klein Coupoletti Building to the Silver Lake Stage.
Okay, I just want one clarification. This is the new stage that was built next to the Klein Coupoletti. We're now renaming Klein Coupoletti, are we?
That is correct. We are only naming the new amenity at the Klein Coupoletti Building. The building maintains its name.
Thank you very much. Counselor Motley?
I apologize. Can I go back to the prior topic?
Yes.
Thank you. You wanted us to make another motion to allow you to?
Begin negotiations.
You're making that motion, Counselor Motley?
I would like to make that, please. Yes.
And I apologize. I just completely obloated that one. So motion by Counselor Motley to give our Park and Rec Director's direction to negotiate with the independent school district number 2909 for the next hockey season. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Counselor Motley. Okay. Do we have a motion on the floor on the Klein Coupoletti new stage yet?
Not yet.
Okay. Looking for some comments and concerns or action. Counselor Paulson?
I will approve the name.
Counselor Paulson moves to approve the recommendation for the addition out of the Klein Coupoletti building titled Silver Lake Stage. Is there support? Support by Counselor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Next request is a
Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Next request is a request from a Girl Scout troop to waive the fees for the usage of the Klein Coopalati Building.
So at our July Park and Rec Commission meeting, we had our local Girl Scout troop request use of the Klein Coopalati Building throughout the school year for them to meet in. And they were requesting the fees, the hundred and twenty-five dollar a day fee be waived for that. Park and Rec Commission denied that request because they do not want us to be giving away our facilities. So I did inform the Girl Scout troop that that was the case, pointed them in a couple of other different directions that they could go. None of those panned out, so per our policy, the Girl Scout troop has asked me to bring this to the city council for consideration, for the city council to waive their fees. They are looking at utilizing the building one day per week for a couple of hours after school. They've committed to cleaning the building after they use it and they are open to just about any day of the week. If we were to do this, it would be my recommendation that we work with this Girl Scout troop for like a Tuesday or a Wednesday, more than likely a Tuesday afternoon that they would be utilizing the facility because historically Tuesdays, the building is not utilized throughout the winter. So I, I'm bringing this request to the council on behalf of the Girl Scouts.
Okay, thank you. A quick question for you, Brian. I know that the Senior Citizen Center had allowed the Boy Scouts to meet there on a, on a number of occasions a while back. Now, they, the Senior Citizen Center runs this, the center. We don't, we, we don't rent that center and they don't rent it either and they've allowed other groups to come in and take, and have you had the opportunity maybe to approach Donna Palt or one of the others to see if that would be a feasible thing?
That was one of the recommendations that I made that did not pan out.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that, Brian. Council Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think that giving them a, a specific time on a specific night, like this is your window, I think is a good idea, especially through the winter, because then we would be able to schedule something, again, a second meeting in the evening if needed, maybe Friends of Public Safety or one of those other groups that are meeting somewhat regularly, but not super regularly. But I also think this is one of the things the city needs to do to help support the community. It won't cost us anything and based on what you've said, we're not really losing anything either. So I will go ahead and make a motion for more discussion to approve authorizing up to three hours at the Klein Coopalati Building for the, for the Girl Scouts and the after-school activity.
Would that be three hours per week?
Uh, per week, yes, and in a single block.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Council Johnson to approve the waiving of fees, is that correct? For the Girl Scouts for a period of time? Is there support? Is there support? Is there support? Motion fails for the lack of support. For me, I guess I, I understand that the Klein Coopalati Building is a rental facility and that we rented and we generate revenue from that as well. But, you know, it does, it does set a precedent if we do this, obviously, and we likely have to do it ethically for any other organization that's going to rent there, whether it's, whoever it is, whether it's a group I belong to, Italian American Club, or the Boy Scouts or someone else, you still have to pay that fee and everybody's had to pay that fee before. And this is a really good service organization. The Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts are fantastic. So, I mean, I'd like to see them have an opportunity for some space. I'd like to see us provide some space for, find a resolution somewhere where they could meet on a regular basis. But I, I, there was no support on the part of the city council. I understand Council Johnson's motion and the impetus behind it, but by setting a precedent, I, you know, where does it stop? So I, I think, but I think there's got to be a way that we can find a way to accommodate them in some way. Council Johnson.
Two thoughts. Did we suggest the club room downstairs?
We did, but there's also a rental rate for that.
But it's much, 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 much lower and our club room is very underutilized.
Yes.
So my, my other, my other thought is, to the mayor's point about setting a precedent, is there a way that we need to create some guidelines for use for this, especially for the winter or something like that? I, I don't know what that would look like. I appreciate that this group and numerous other nonprofit groups are trying to utilize public spaces that, that are not, that are public spaces funded by the public for public use. And I think that us doing a little bit more diligence and about what other facilities and what their needs are. I know that in the past, groups have used the greenhouse for no, no cost to them, but there's not a cooking facility there and that makes it challenging for folks. So I, I, I guess I'll make another motion that we direct staff to look at how we support these kind of organizations moving forward as a public entity with public space that is unused and how that fits into the grand scheme of things for further, for more discussion at a later time.
Okay, moved by Council Johnson, is there support?
Support.
Support by Council Freely. Is there any further discussion? Pam, did you have a comment you'd like to make?
Yes, I did.
Thank you.
We were contacted by the group, the Girl Scouts, and Britt and I had also discussed it, but since we do have other nonprofits that are paying the rental fee for the club room, it was suggested at that time that they would have to pay as well.
So in the interim, I proffer this. May I?
Yes.
Thank you. So what does it cost to rent the club rooms?
Currently it is a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day.
How about the, well, please, how about the club rooms?
The club room downstairs?
Hmm?
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five dollars a day?
It's twenty-five percent off.
Pardon?
It's twenty-five percent off if they're a nonprofit.
Yeah, so.
Is that correct? Oh, now for the club room.
So, well, it's just part of this motion, but, I mean, if, if they're willing to use the club rooms downstairs at twenty-five dollars a meeting, I have a group of people that'll pay that for them for the wintertime. So you can make that offer if you want and they'll pay the twenty-five dollars, so.
I will happily pass that along.
Yeah, that'd be good, so. Council Beyondich.
Thank you. And believe it or not, I was a Girl Scout leader right back in the day. But we used the school. And the school was open to us coming in and the kids didn't have to travel after school, depending on what age group. But we went to the school, they provided a space for us and we used it for three years while I was a Girl Scout leader. So I don't know if the school has been approached, if they would be able to offer any space. I know back when I was doing this, they, they provided space for the group.
I will also make that recommendation.
Thank you, Council Beyondich. Was there a motion still? A motion on the floor in a second? Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Council Paulson.
Thank you. Could Pam read back the motion?
Yeah, read back the motion, please, Pam.
Moved by Council Johnson, supported by Council Freely, to request city staff to look into setting a policy for nonprofit rental fees.
Okay, do we not already have a nonprofit rental fee? We already have a policy on that?
We have a nonprofit rental rate at the event center, but I don't believe we have one citywide.
In light of our budget discussion coming forward, I'm not going to be supporting this at all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Council Paulson. Council Motley.
Um, I echoed your thoughts earlier on giving anything away for free currently in the city with the current budget situation we have. Also, I kind of agree with you, Council Paulson, in what you just stated. So, thank you, Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Council Motley. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Council Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and my motion is more about regular meetings of, I mean, this is once a week, which is a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month for a nonprofit that will probably, you know, I, I, I get a little frustrated because the Girl Scout troop that are attending are also our citizens and they're also future leaders. And to have a discussion about how do we support them and other nonprofits moving forward amongst other city facilities, I think would be a very valid discussion. I'm, I'm not asking for any discount or anything for them at this time. I just think, you know, if we want all of our facilities to be utilized and, and build relationships, I, I think there should be at least some sort of discussion about other buildings in town and, and what, how that works out. So I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Council Beyondich.
Thank you. You had mentioned earlier that this went to the commission, Park and Rec Commission, and they denied it. Could you tell me a little bit more about that on what their thought process was?
Essentially the same conversation that we are having here at the council level. The Park and Rec Commission, I think it's safe for me to say, is opposed to flat waiving of fees for all groups. They have been very consistent here in the past six months of not waiving fees for any groups, just for the fact that they believe that the, we have a rental rate for a reason. And so they believe that when you are utilizing a facility, we've got somebody unlocking, somebody that locks it, increase usage of electricity in that building. So the city needs to recoup something is their belief for when these buildings are being used. I can make other arguments also, but I support the direction that the Park and Rec Commission has been going of not waiving fees for buildings.
Thank you, and I'd, I would agree with that. I will support the commission that worked on this. And I totally understand if you do it for one, now you're going to do it for all. We have a lot of city buildings that I'm afraid that are going to be inched into at no charge. So I, I completely support the commission on this one. And I think when the rate, the rate is what it is, there are other facilities that can be looked into to see where meetings can be held. And I, if they have not contacted the school, I mean, these are schoolchildren, their, or kids are coming in for Girl Scouts and we had no problem renting or having usage of a room in the school. And we also cleaned up, we didn't, we didn't leave a mess, but for three years, leading Girl Scouts, we were able to use a room at the school building for that. So city buildings are a little bit different. There's maintenance and there's the locking, unlocking and the liability of it. So I am, I am okay with if they can pursue other avenues to find a space to meet. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. So there are options out there, schools, the, the club room downstairs and the, and maybe some church organizations too, that I see some groups meet no cost through some church organizations as well. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Council Motley.
Can I have the motion read back one more time? Sorry. Thanks, Pam.
Yeah, please, Pam.
Council Johnson, did you want to amend that to add more regarding the weekly meetings or consistency of meetings or?
Just to have a discussion about it in general for the other city buildings, since there's already defined at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, but there's not for the rest of the city, to have a discussion so that it, it can be a choice made by the council and not just something that we're, we've always done. So I'd like to have that discussion about what the policy looks like.
Okay, and I did work on drafting one for the club room and I didn't add it to this agenda just because we already had a full one, so that will be on the next committee of the hall as well.
Thank you.
Okay, so thank you. Did everybody get that motion? Read, read back the motion, please, once again. Thank you.
Moved by Council Johnson, supported by Council Freely, to request city staff to look into setting a policy for nonprofit rental fees for further discussion for city buildings.
Okay, did you, get that motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments?
I just feel like the city should be focusing on directly city business, but that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Council Freely.
Brian, have there been some instances where city spaces were available for use, kind of spontaneously, where an entity then utilized that space, found that this was exactly what they're looking for and need and made a commitment to then utilize that space on an ongoing basis, which would be then profitable to the city?
I can't think of an example.
And or, but it uses a marketing strategy to some degree. There are people out there that have groups looking for a space to meet. They're not sure what's going to be accommodating to their needs. We offer them that space for that meeting and they say, wow, this is great. This is exactly what we need. We're going to do this for the next five years regularly and consistently. Wouldn't that be to the benefit of the city?
Yes, it could be.
So anyhow, I mean, there are options out there for us to consider as to why we would allow a space to be utilized in the event that it could be then further utilized for a long period of time for the costs that we're seeking. So anyhow, that's just a thought. Thank you.
Uh, thank you.
And like case in point, Girl Scouts, you know, might be willing to pay a hundred and twenty-five dollars per year, years into, you know what I'm saying? It's like, even if we offered them, how about a hundred and twenty-five dollars to use the space for the sum total of their meetings for this particular time, if in fact then they're willing to contract with us for the costs that they'd incur normally in the future and not just the Girl Scouts, but any other entities. Anyhow, I mean, we're, right now, I just kind of sense that we are in this serious panic mode with regard to our budget, which, yes, we got news that we have to tighten our belt, but it doesn't mean we need to tighten it around our neck and hang ourselves, which means like foregoing opportunities for the Girl Scouts in town. I mean, really, or not sending marketing people to staff development opportunities for six hundred dollars. I mean, we, we, we need to consider what we're doing. There is business that needs to be conducted in this city and we're, we're pulling in the reins on things such as the Girl Scouts. I'm concerned about that. I, I just think we're, we're, we're panicking at a point when I don't necessarily feel the panic is necessary. So that's my diatribe. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And just to clarify, the, these rental rates have been in place for quite a while, even before, you know, we discussed the budget and other things. So they've already been in place and there have already been some issues with respect to the rentals. The Park and Rec Commission has been consistent in their approach to those things, recommendations comes from Park and Rec and staff with respect to this. But I do concur that these are city buildings. I get it. If it's a private rental for a specific function, I can understand that. But when you have community activities where you have, you know, future leaders of our, you know, those kind of things, where, where these little nonprofit groups that, I mean, I, I, I think there's a way that we can make some adjustments there, but, so anyway. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll call, please.
Motley?
No.
Freely?
No.
Paulson?
No.
Beyondich?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Aaron Zelli?
Puffy?
Yes. What passes? Four, three? All right, thank you. All right, let's go to H and I and then we'll take a real quick break.
Next item is review change order number eight for the Iron Trail Motors Event Center project from Crowe Sanderson, and we do have Pat Wertz here from Crowe Sanderson.
I'm going to ask Pat to come up for this presentation.
Okay, well, thank you, Pat Wertz from Crowe Sanderson. I apologize for the long wait.
Oh, it's all right. Thanks for squeezing me in late.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Almost, we finally got the Miners' Event Convention Center all closed out. So, it's kind of a long process and a large, large project for various reasons. So, at the very end, we found out we had a $12,529, basically savings to the project. So, that's good news. We kind of returned and reflected on that, and otherwise I think everything's been good, Brian, so far.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, essentially, this means that the project came in $12,500 under the construction budget.
Yeah.
Now, my recommendation is we take this $12,500 and set it aside in a special account that we don't touch, and use that as the seed money or the match money for the Dwayne Breyer's memorial being hung in the facility, because the $12,000 covers the $10,000 match that we will need, plus also gives us a $2,500 contingency, so that when prices go up here in the next year on these things, that we are able to get this historic mural to our area hung in our event center and not cost the taxpayers any money. I believe this is an ethical use of that money, because the money was set aside for the construction. FFNE is part of construction, so we're essentially using it for an FFNE item. Thank you.
How much is that?
The savings.
$12,529?
Yep.
Okay. So, I think we've quickly reviewed this. So, there's going to be two motions here. One is for the change order issue, and the other is the dedicated fund motion. So, Councilor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. Brian, I was totally following you, and that's exactly where I was going. I think that's wonderful, wonderful idea. But I do have a question, and is that, Pat, is that going to be $12,501 given back to the city, or does that mean that the city doesn't have to pay that?
Correct. So, basically, it's a D. doc change.
Is it coming back to us, or is it?
Yep, it goes back to you.
Comes back to us.
So, we're getting an actual physical check, or we're just not paying, we're shorting it by $12,000?
We're getting money back.
Okay. So, if that's the case, then I think we can put it aside and dedicate it to, to match the 90-10 split. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Looking for a motion regarding the change order?
I'll move the change order.
Councilor Johnson moves to approve the change order and is supported by Councilor Motley. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a second motion in there at the request of our Park and Rec Director regarding Councilor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to set aside $12,529 to a special, I don't know if the word is fund, if we need to use the word fund, to be set aside to use, utilize at a later date for a matching grant, possible matching grant.
Matching grant or the matching funds for the Dwayne Breyer?
It would be for that. I'm sorry, for specifically for the Dwayne Breyer mural.
Okay, thank you. Moved by Councilor Paulson. Is there support?
Support for discussion.
Support by Councilor Motley for discussion. Further discussion, Councilor Motley.
Nicely done, Brian. Also, you must be pretty positive in your thoughts, you're going to get that grant for 90 grand, or?
We have made it through the initial grant application to see if this project would qualify, so that's positive. So, now I just have more paperwork that I get to fill out for the second phase or the full grant application.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Motley. Councilor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I will not be supporting the $12,000. There are so many more important things at that building that we could utilize that are used every day. The process with this mural that was going to be thrown away has become frustrating to me. It's going to cost a little bit, it's going to cost a lot. We need to put it up, we need to take it down, we need to, we can't frame it ourselves, we need special glass. It's frustrating that, that we are working so hard on some things that will benefit a few, and then we have $25, $100 a month for a Girl Scout troop that we don't even want to discuss. So, it's frustrating, and I will be voting no on setting aside the money. I'd rather see go back into the building on stuff to make staff, time use more efficient, and use of the facility to save money elsewhere in the building. Thank you.
No, thank you. Councilor Biondich.
Thank you. Is there an opportunity to raise these, the funds for that mural outside of using this money?
I could apply for other possible grants, possibly through like the Virginia Community Foundation. IRRB, I believe, has a culture, or has a grant that we could apply for. So, there are some other opportunities. It just seemed to me that the timing of this was very unique, and so proposing this direction for it to go.
And I appreciate that, and I would love to see that mural hung, but I'll go back to our budget meeting at 1:00, where I think the dollars should go back into a pot that we need to run that building instead of something like this. I think, I think we need to explore where we can get other outside dollars for that, if that grant comes through. We don't even know if the grant comes through, right?
Correct. You've just given me permission to apply for it. My question would be, being these were construction dollars, can we use that check for operations at this point? I didn't think that would be permissible, which is why I was proposing that it be used kind of as a view of an FFNE item.
Right. And I, and I do appreciate that. I really do. But I'm just, I, I'm wrapping my head around everything that we're going into and wondering if that money could be used elsewhere for that building. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Biondich. So, looks like we have three more lights on, so we'll get through those, and then we'll take a vote. First, Councilor Paulson, then the Councilor Friedle, then the Councilor Motley. Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. In light of Councilor Johnson and Councilor Biondich, I mean, I'm, you know how excited I am to support this mural, Brian, because we worked on it together with the design team, and it's, it's such an amazing piece of history for the city of Virginia. But I also know that maybe potentially we could get the other 10% from maybe Virginia Community Foundation and the IRRB Cultural Tourism Grant. So, rather than dedicate those funds, which I don't believe can be used for operational expense, I think they have to be used for building expense, and FFNE would probably be under the correct heading for that. But I think at this time, until we go through that budget process, I'd probably want to withdraw that motion, Mayor. And even though I'm severely in support of getting that mural hung, I feel that it's probably not the most prudent thing to do, so I'll be withdrawing that motion.
Okay. Councilor Paulson withdraws her motion to support a dedicated fund of $12,529 to help support seed money for the Dwayne Breyer mural. Who seconded that motion? Councilor Motley, are you going to rescind your second?
Yes, that's what, that's why my green light was on. Thank you, Councilor Johnson, and Councilor Biondich for that info.
Okay. Further discussion, I have someone to wait. Councilor Friedle, go ahead.
I just, you know, you know, I admired that thing while I was walking the halls of Virginia High School. It was beautiful artwork that was done by a local artist many years before. For some reason, the school district, after acquiring $180 million of public funding to build a new facility, didn't see it as anything but garbage to them, it appears, because they have no interest in putting it in the new school. So, I'm like, what, what was the rationale, or what was the initiative or motion made to put it at the new arena that would now incur a cost of over $100,000 to put it up?
We acquired the painting from the school. The school donated the painting to us. It has been taken down. It is in a climate-controlled storage area. In the process, we have had, applied and received a grant from the Virginia Community Foundation to have the mural appraised and advised of how best to preserve and protect the mural moving forward, hanging it inside the event center. The problem with that mural is its size. It is huge, as you know from having walked by it. There are not many walls throughout town or in many buildings that are large enough to display that whole thing. We happen to have the wall space inside the event center.
Can I ask which wall, northeast, south?
It would be the north wall in the main arena. That's the wall directly above the Zamboni garage and below the scoreboard. Mural will fit there nicely. And one of the reasons that we liked moving the mural to the event center is because the design of the event center took into account the industries that were the reason for the founding of our communities here, being the timber and the mining industries. And this mural is the history of both above-ground and below-ground mining in the area. So, it seems a very fitting tribute. The reason the cost is so expensive is it's about $40,000 to have the mural professionally mounted and hung on the wall. Also have been working with a local company here to produce a framework that would go around it, that the glass would slide in so that we couldn't physically touch the mural, and it would be protected long-term. So, all these things are expensive, unfortunately, these days. We would be utilizing staff labor to physically hang the frame that would be going around it, trying to cut down on some of the costs there.
I'd personally think it would add to the aesthetics of the building, Biondich.
It would tremendously.
I think it would be useful on that wall, to be honest with you.
Yes.
But the cost that we're incurring is a little head-scratching, so, thank you.
Thank you. Not to belabor, but quickly, from my perspective, setting aside $12,529 of money we didn't know we were going to get, we know we have it, but I think more importantly, that is a very important mural, a very important mural for the history of the city of Virginia. Now, if we don't hang it at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, hang it somewhere else, where are you going to hang it? So, I support the recommendation to set this money aside for seed money. You're never going to get a grant for every, for every single penny that you're going to spend on a project. So, this is seed money to glean additional funding to put this mural up. Yes, it's expensive, it's for the long-term, it has a significant historic value to this community, just like the Minnesota Historical Society does with all those other projects. I think because this is money that's in this current, we current have it in our budget, not for 2024, it's for this year, I just think it's, we need to put that in there. I would prefer to have it in there for seed money in the event if you, if we, if we get a whole bunch more money, you know, we can do, we can de-allocate this to some other source. But to say, how much money is the city putting into this project? Oh, none. We're trying to raise all the money itself, whether you get it from the Virginia Community Foundation or for private people making a donation, that comes later on down the road as you, as you try to get more money. But I really believe that the city has to have more seed money with respect to that. But this $12,529, that motion did not pass, did it? Right?
It was pulled.
It was pulled, excuse me, it was pulled. So, this money remains and goes back into the general fund as proposed unless there's another motion on the floor. Is there another motion on the floor with respect to this $12,529? Otherwise, it just goes back into the general fund. No other motions on the floor. The money, thank you for the change order, and so we'll move on to the next item on agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Number I is request for donation of photo of Steve Sirditch that is owned by the city.
A few weeks ago, I had a member of the public approach me asking if I would give them the picture of Steve Sirditch that hung in the lobby of the Miners Memorial Building. If you remember, it was a, probably about a five-foot-tall picture of Steve Sirditch that was black and white in a wood frame. I informed that individual that I am not allowed to just give away city property, and so they have made a formal request of the city council to donate that picture so that it can be given to Steve Sirditch to be used how he sees appropriate.
Thank you, Brian. So, I'll qualify this, that Steve Sirditch and I are classmates. I've known him ever since I was a little kid. We grew up playing hockey and playing ball, so just give that as a side note. He was up for the class reunion, as he always is, comes up and plays golf, yada, yada, yada. We have a really nice light, picture of him on the wall in the lobby of the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, 1976 Olympian in hockey, US hockey. We have, this is not a president-setting request. We also had a nice big portrait of Dante Tini, who obviously his remains were discovered and returned in a very honorable fashion, and the family got a portrait of him from the city. I think this is a gesture that, that we should offer to Mr. Sirditch and gladly turn that over to him in the black and white. He's already approved and authorized his photo to be up at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, came to all the events. It's only prudent and fitting that we, as a city, donate that black and white photo to him for posterity. So, those are my comments. Councilor Johnson.
Mayor, Colleen, are there any legal ramifications of donating it versus declaring it surplus and having it go that way?
I think you can donate, yeah, you could do it either way. I don't know that it's really surplus property, because you are utilizing it. I think it wouldn't really fall under that category legally. You know, it'd be different if you were, you had another painting to replace it with and something like that. So, you're basically returning it to the owner, or returning it to the subject of the painting, or picture, I should say, picture. Again, you kind of look at whether there's a, you know, public purpose in doing that. You want to be careful about how you go forward with that in terms of setting a precedent if you've done that previously. I don't know if there's an issue of getting it copied. You know, that's another option you could look at, providing him with a copy and, or providing the city with a copy as well. I don't know if I answered your question, Councilor Johnson.
I would make a motion to direct staff to have, to bring it forward to the Tuesday night meeting with the proper verbiage so that we can get it to the owner or the potential new owner without worrying about precedent-setting or that kind of stuff.
Okay. Motion by Councilor Johnson, is there support?
I'll support for discussion.
Support by Councilor Friedle for further discussion. Before we go to further discussion, Councilor Friedle, do you have something else?
Just in clarification, we are not currently using that black and white photo. It is in storage, again, in a climate-controlled storage, so I don't know if that would impact whether it is surplus. The same picture, we had a color version of it printed on metal. That is what is currently hanging in the lobby. We do not have any other plans for the picture, the black and white picture of Steve Sirditch. Thank you.
That would change my analysis. Thank you for providing me with the background information on that, Mr. Sirditch. And in that case, if it is just in storage, you have a replacement already posted, then I, you could declare it surplus property at this time. I misunderstood. I thought it was actually up in the facility right now and being utilized.
So, by declaring it surplus property, then it has to be sold by auction. Is that correct?
I believe so. I believe so. If you want us to take a look at it, Brian and I can take a look, see if there's a way to do it, accomplish what the council's goals are, Mayor. I'd be happy to look at that.
And I think that's, I think that's the motion on the floor by Councilor Johnson to do that and support for further discussion. Thank you for the clarification, Colleen. Councilor Friedle.
And so, the existing portrait of Steve Lubr Sirditch that's in the lobby will remain hanging with the other people that are up there?
Correct. We are not looking at giving that one to him. We are looking at giving him the old black and white picture, which is the same picture, but the one that is in storage. The one that's hanging currently in the lobby will stay hanging in the US Steel Lobby.
Very nice, because having grown up wanting to be Lubr Sirditch, it's like I would think he'd want to keep this picture up there, and the community should think that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, it has been moved and supported to direct staff to find a way to, whatever appropriate way to bring it to the next committee of the hall meeting so that this can be accomplished. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Let's just take a couple-minute break here real quick and... And thank you. Okay, thank you, everybody. We're back after taking a quick break for the rest of the committee home meeting. Just a reminder, got some information from the public that if we all as counselors could speak a little more clearly and loudly or closer to the microphone so they can hear us at home, would be greatly appreciated if we could do that. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the next item along the agenda. Britt?
Thank you. The next item is number five, the request to approve the use of city parking lot behind Ryder's Bar, which is along Fourth Avenue and First Street South, to hold the benefit on Saturday, September 23rd, 2023, from 2:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
I will move the request directing staff to barricade it appropriately for safety.
Counsel Johnson moves to approve, is there support?
All support.
By Counsel Paulson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Item number six is a request to approve the resolution to approve the hire of dual-role firefighter EMT.
So moved. Moved to approve by Counsel Johnson, is there support?
Support.
Support by Counsel Beyondich, is there any further discussion? I'm sorry, supported by Counsel Wu, no? Yeah, I heard two motions, I wasn't sure who said what. So let's clarify. Motion to a second by Counsel Barnzelli, thank you, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item number seven is a request to approve placement of Officer John Hodgkins in the school resource officer position.
So moved. Moved to approve by Counsel Johnson, is there support?
Support for discussion.
Support by Counsel Motley for discussion, further discussion, Counsel Motley.
So we move him into this position, but due to everything happening down in the cities or the special meeting may or may not happening, he's technically not going to be in-house. It's just for the email, for the chief. Okay, so we're going to be okay with approving this the way it is today?
Yes, and I think the goal and objective of the police chief is to place him in that position where he can respond to the school upon request. So he'll be dedicated to the school but not in the school. So if the school has an issue, he can respond to the school and take action. So it's kind of like, the state law is so convoluted that it handcuffs the school resource officer that's currently in the school. In this particular case, he'll be dedicated to respond to the school but not be the school resource officer inside the school, so he would be the dedicated officer doing that. So he, that officer can take the appropriate action in order to comply with the state law.
Okay, thank you.
You. So it has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. And we jump down to item number nine, approve the access-use license agreement with RGGS Land and Minerals for ditching.
Move to approve.
Moved to approve by Counsel Paulson, is there support?
Support.
By Counsel Beyondich, there were two of you there, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Item number 10 is a request to approve the resolution declaring items as surplus.
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Motley, supported by Counsel Johnson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Item number 11 is approve the cooperative fire protection agreement with the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, Division of Forestry, and the Virginia Fire Department.
So moved.
Yeah, moved to approve by Counsel Motley, is there support? Support by Counsel Freely, further discussion? This is an agreement that we have on a regular basis. Any response by the fire department to this request will be reimbursed based on our costs. So moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Counsel Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just wondering, Eric, if there's been any increase in payments from last year to this year that the state is offering on the chart that's been provided?
We have Assistant Chief here today.
Morning.
Morning.
I don't know, honestly. I wasn't in this position last year, so I didn't see the contract. I do know this is pretty standard throughout the fire service. It's kind of a boilerplate contract that comes out from the state and...
Thank you for that.
Yep.
And I believe the contract does indicate it's reimbursable based upon current expenses from the USDA to back to the fire department if you have to respond, is that correct?
There is a set schedule, if you look, depending on what kind of apparatus, whether it's an ambulance or an engine, the first two hours and then rounded every half an hour after that. So a type-one engine, like for structural, is reimbursed at a higher amount than a type-six Ylan engine is.
Sure.
And then for every added personnel beyond what is allocated, it's a $15 per personnel addition to the reimbursement.
Thank you, Eric. Moved and supported, right? Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
And the final item is just the first draft of the non-city use of city logo policy for you to review.
I just want to echo, I still think the city logo should be only used for city business, but here we are. So under procedures, which is page 80 in the middle, the requests for non-city use logo forms shall be submitted to the blank. So is that the city council or who would that be?
Whoever you'd like him to be. I don't know who you'd like this to be. This is just my, except my first run at this. I think the city council would probably be the final approval, and so the first draft would probably be submitted to Pam for initial review and then the second for the council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Motley. Counsel Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate city staff taking time to do this, but I still will hold to the, I just believe that the city logo and the city seal should be specific to city business only, which would remove the council or any other body from having to pick and choose how our logo is utilized. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Paulson. Counsel Johnson.
So my question is, how do organizations that utilize in-kind services from the city thank them appropriately? The current logo, as it's displayed behind the mayor, is less than six years old. And when it comes to marketing and branding, having a logo that is recognizable and throughout the city and obviously very recognizable is super important. So I appreciate that we've started the process of what that looks like, but then I also want to know, how does the city get thanked? The number of events that we support to bring in economic development, tourism, support our nonprofits in town is a huge, huge part of what we do. We just approved the city use of some city barricades for a, basically for a fundraiser to block for safety reasons. Now, do I think the city logo should be there? No, but I would think that the folks would like to thank the city of Virginia for their support as they're moving forward. And then this is about the city logo specifically and the city seal specifically, but I also have questions about when and where does Iron Trail Motors Event Center use their logo? When does the library use their logo? Does the Human Rights Commission need to come up with their own logo? Because part of the task from the state as human rights is to promote equality and equity. When does Public Works need their own logo so that when they're providing support, that it needs to be, it needs to be out there? One of the things that we hear is what's the city doing? And by not saying, hey, this is your city supporting you, what are we doing? You know, one of the concerns several weeks ago was the city paying money, and we don't. We provide in-kind services, extra garbage cans, sweeping the street before the event so it's a little neater. All of those things to me are great uses of city resources to provide economic support for businesses and nonprofits in the community. So those are a couple of the items I would like to also have answers for as we move forward with this policy. And a policy, if it's just city business, at what point is it city business? If we, we've never, we don't use, Land of the Loon does not use our logo, but they thank us at every intermission for helping them, we rent the park to them for a very, very, very discounted price. Because I think we value what it does for the community on the third weekend in June. Do we tell them then that they can no longer thank us during their event? Like, I'm really trying to process what the purpose of this is and how it fits into the city, supporting the groups that utilize all of our facilities that draw people in. Well, those are my questions as we move forward on the policy. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I ask our city attorney, in past practice, I don't know if you've worked with other communities, but is a city seal and a city logo just specifically to be used for city business?
Colleen?
We haven't had a situation in that in recent times that I can think of. I believe that, you know, like many things in these times, there's branding and marketing, and I don't think the city's prohibited from using that in the same way that private businesses are. You have control over it to some degree, but for the ordinance is saying something different, which I did check for today's meeting, there's nothing saying you can't do it. It is your, in a sense, your property to do with it what you choose.
And I think my concern stems back to, again, groups submitting and picking and choosing. I think that's a very, it's going to get the city of Virginia into trouble. And I don't know if you've ever heard of groups coming forward to apply for logo usage, and then if they're turned down and one's approved, how do you reconcile that as a city?
I think having a policy is a good first step, then you have some guidelines, right? And then you've got some rules about how you go about doing that, to the extent you're going to allow others to use your insignia. I mean, often it's a positive though, as well as a negative, you know, in the sense that, you know, you're on a T-shirt because there's a run, you know, you're part of the group that's being advertised. But, you know, I can see to the extent decisions are being made that make one group feel that they were treated differently, you can always have potential for litigation. There's both going on at all times.
And I think where I'm coming from still is that the city seal though shouldn't be used for anything other than city business, the actual seal. I mean, that's what the mayor fix it.
It's the city to decide what they want to do with it. How expansive do you want to be reading it? What uses do you want it for? You know, I don't think there's any prohibition that I could see in your ordinances or your charter that would address that issue. I mean, it really goes unaddressed. I don't know that there's any state statute that would interfere with that. It's just you can choose to utilize it however you feel fit, I mean, like any other entity.
Okay, thank you. And then I guess my thought process on each department having their own logo is that would take thousands and thousands of dollars, resources with marketing in different ways, and I would not be in favor of that at all. But I do appreciate staff putting this together. I just do not, I've stated this a whole bunch of times, I do not want to be in the business of picking and choosing who comes forward and who gets to utilize the city of Virginia's logo. I think that the city of Virginia logo and the city seal should be used for official city business only, and that would include architect plans. I mean, that's city business, that's conducting business on behalf of the city. So I feel like that's where I will still remain on this, and I don't know what's going to happen with this draft policy is, I mean, it's put before us as a draft, but now what happens? So I'm not in favor of moving forward with this at all, so what happens now from this point?
Well, a draft is just for us to consider.
Sure.
Not taking any action at this point in time, we're just a draft policy for us to take a look at. We can certainly try to vet it out, discuss it even further, but we're not necessarily have to take action on this draft at all, it's just a draft policy for us to take a look at.
Could I move to receive and file?
Well, you can make any motion.
So I guess I would move to receive and file this draft motion.
The draft policy?
Policy, excuse me.
Okay. Counsel Paulson makes a motion to receive and file this draft policy, is there support for that?
I would support that.
By Counsel Motley, is there any further discussion? I do. For me, you walk in a fine line as to, you know, how a city logo is utilized, and I have some concerns about, you know, whatever organization wants to use our city logo and thank them for sponsoring this or thanking you for sponsoring that or using, you know, this as well. You know, you provided some barricades, so we're going to thank the city of Virginia for that. I get that, thanking the city of Virginia. You want to thank the city of Virginia, thank the city of Virginia. But if when you're using the logo, I'm going to give you an extreme example. I mean, everybody has a right to free speech. We all agree that living in this country, you can say and do what you want as long as you're not hurting others. You may not agree with what they do, or whatever the organization is, but they have a right to do it. So I'm going to give you the extreme example. So say the KKK comes into Virginia, Minnesota, and wants to hold a parade rally like they went like a few years back. And so they are asking for permission to have this parade permit, which, you know, they have a right to get one and pay for it if they want, so they have this parade permit. And so on their logo for their advertising their parade, they'll say, thank you to the city of Virginia for giving us a parade permit, allowing us to participate, and put a splash to our logo over the top. Is that acceptable to use our logo for that? You want to thank the city of Virginia, thank the city of Virginia. But to put a logo of a city to purport that we are supporting that particular group or that particular group or that particular becomes problematic. And so when we put into the next gear, now you want to pick and choose as to which one you're going to utilize and which one you don't. So being a member of the Italian-American club, so I want, you know, to, we want to thank the city of Virginia for, you know, sponsoring our event at the park, you know, providing the services or whatever the case may be, do we use the city logo for that? You know, thanking the city for something is one thing, but using a logo, we have to find a way in which to set the policy and how these logos are going to be utilized. I mean, we have a tent set up at the Land of the Loon, is that acceptable? The city of Virginia has a tent there, we provide information there, we do all those kinds of things there, it's part of the city, right? So how do we vet one organization from another? How do we allow one organization or another to do that regardless of whether or not we give in-kind services? What is an in-kind service? It could be simply putting up a barricade, simply, you know, sponsoring, waiving a fee or something for an organization, whatever that is. But where does it stop? You know, I mean, I think sometimes when that city logo is used, there's a perception that the entire city of Virginia is supportive of a certain event and that it polarizes other segments of the community in that regard. And so I think, my personal perspective is only my personal perspective, is that we have to find a way in which to ensure that we're not polarizing our community with the simple use of our city logo. I mean, we all have to be inclusive, we all have to have the opportunity to give everybody that chance to express their viewpoints, whatever the case may be, whoever it is, whatever organization it is, but using the city logo to prompt that can be polarizing this community. So we have to find that fine line, and this policy is just a start for us to review and discuss. Those are my comments, thank you. So there's a motion, receive and file, we need to vote on that? Thank you for giving me the time to, a further discussion, Counsel Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would agree with you that in the absence of a policy, whoever wants to can use it for whatever they want to use it. So I don't think receiving and filing, this is the next proper step, and I will not be supporting that motion.
Okay, thank you. It has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Counsel Beyondich, and then back over to Counsel Paulson. Counsel Beyondich.
Thank you. So what happens if somebody just uses it without permission?
Don't have a policy.
We don't have a policy. We don't have a policy.
So we need something?
Mm-hmm.
Or otherwise, people can just pick up that logo and use it.
It happens all the time.
And one thing to think about, which I didn't mention earlier, and I apologize for that, you know, I assume this isn't trademarked. I don't know that you can trademark seals, for example, as opposed to the logo. There's some First Amendment protections that come into play as well, so you have to be careful about how you consider that. So government, you know, government seals are, to some extent, public property. I mean, you know, they're part of the city government, so I don't know that you can restrict it to some degree. I mean, I think putting together a policy that meets those criteria are important things to think about. But, you know, we can certainly dive into that a little bit more in terms of what your boundaries are on that, because I think there's some concern on my end that you're looking at a problem with the First Amendment or a trademark issue that you might want to need to address, too. So, and I don't know, ban, I don't think really works for that reason.
No. So, but you're recommending that we have a policy to address that. We just have to vet that out?
Exactly, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilor, any further information? Councilor Biondich? Yeah, Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. And the reason I was suggesting to receive and file this as a, this draft, is because it's nowhere, it's not close to what I'm thinking, what direction I would go. So I don't know if city staff wants to work with the council, but this is, it's specified for non-city use, and I still feel like it should only be used for city use. Then there's some, there's some issues I have between the city seal and the city logo that are actually also within this document. So this, I wouldn't, I mean, unless we want to sit and massage and massage a draft, I'm not in favor of what the language is in here and nor where we consulted. We were just, I guess, staff was directed to come up with a policy, and we didn't really give any input. So I feel like this doesn't represent, for me personally, it does not represent anything that I would ever approve, and that's why I suggested receiving and filing. But if we need to have something on our books for a policy, I'm okay with that. But how much city staff time are we going to take to keep going and amending and changing it in less than until the council has input? So I don't know how we make that happen, but this draft policy right here, I'm not comfortable with at all, the language in it.
Okay, thank you. Well, the purpose of this draft is, staff was directed to do it. Staff came up with a policy, a draft policy for us to take a look at and consider. And we have it, we're reviewing it, we're discussing it. I think that for, I think the discussion has to continue, and then each individual councilor can go through this policy, make some notes, make some corrections, make some suggestions, send it to our city administrator with those suggestions, and taking all those suggestions into account, making some changes to the draft policy, and bring it back to us for further discussion. That's the way we normally do our policies, we draft our policies in that regard. We have input, we have it now, we have it individually when we send it to our city administrator, and we can have it the next time the draft comes back with all the changes that were recommended for us to take a look at it again. So it's an ongoing, working document to try to come to a conclusion and find a solid policy that is legal and meets the terms and conditions of what we're trying to accomplish. Councilor Paulson?
Mayor, in light of that, then I would rescind the motion that I originally had on the floor to receive and file, as long as we will be working through this together.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Paulson rescinds her motion, and the second as well?
Yes.
Thank you. So it is a working document, and this is the first of a draft that we directed the staff to do, and this is the policy that staff came up with. And so we're looking at some more input. That's what staff is requesting from us to review and comment. Councilor Biondich?
Thank you. And Colleen, as the city attorney, would you have input on this as well and guide us through this?
Sure, absolutely.
On what we can and can't do?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So we have a chance to take a look at that. We have the policy before us. Any questions or comments right now, we'll be glad to continue to discuss. And then as we move forward in putting together a policy that's meetable and acceptable and legal for all of us, consider. Councilor Motley?
This policy would make me a lot more happy if it just said, "logo policy for city use only."
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Motley. Councilor Johnson, do you have anything? No, nothing? Okay. May say that for some other time? Okay. Any other questions, comments about the draft policy that's presented by staff? And again, it's a working document for us to continue to comment moving forward and working toward a resolution. Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually have one other item of concern, if I can add that under other items of concern if we are finished with this discussion.
Sure, as soon as we're done, we'll move to other items of concern. Thank you. Anything else with respect to the city logo, the policy that the draft policy has been disseminated to all of us and for us to consider and comment and move forward? And that also includes the draft policy as a working document for the general public as well, and the general public can also comment in that regard. So, thank you. Yes, ma'am? Please come forward. You're welcome to ask a question and turn the microphone onto green, and please state your name for the record, and welcome to the committee of the home meeting.
Good afternoon, Council and Mayor.
And you are?
Esteemed colleagues. I'm Kathy Merkel.
Okay, thank you.
A wonderful citizen from Virginia. I just have a very quick question, and thank you for including me. Very interesting discussion. I've been very involved with logo usage with the very prominent premier festival in the Twin Cities and through my business associations. My only question is, in a nutshell, what is, are you going to put such a time limit deadline in regard to this?
No, we have not set one yet.
Okay.
Which is still an open document for us to talk about. I think once we do that and come up with a policy to put forward, it certainly will be disseminated for comment, and then we'll set a deadline then.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, any other discussion on the city logo policy? Okay, anything else on the agenda for you? Britt, thank you. Colleen, do you have anything else?
No, thank you, Mayor and Council.
Okay, thank you. Anything, Sheri? Okay. Jenny? Pam? Councilor Paulson, other items of concern?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to add this on. I had a visit from a gentleman, Mark Podpesker, who lives at 815 North 9th Avenue.
Yes.
And he's having a few issues with people coming, driving into Alcott Park, and they pull into just, I would say, just slightly northeast of the greenhouse, and there's a little area where they can kind of pull off and veer off. And if you park there, your headlights point right in his living room, right at his living room. And it's not, well, he said it's a problem, even though the park closes at 10:00 PM. But say like in, you know, in November, when it's dark at 4:30, people are parking, leaving their car on, and their headlights are interrupting his living and his ability to watch TV in his living room. And I'm just wondering if we could have staff maybe take a look at, I don't think you can put barriers or barricades. I went down there and it's, the pathway goes like this, and then there's like a little dip down, and it looks like it's, kind of should have been grass, and then now it's gravelly. But maybe we could just say, "no parking with lights on," or give some sort of a, you know, if people are utilizing the park, they're not going to have their cars on and running. They're going to be at the park, utilizing the park. But if their cars are sitting there running, they're in their car and doing what, I'm not exactly sure. But he's had, at night, it's been two, three o'clock in the morning, when there's been high, bright lights shining through his front window, as well as the neighbor next to him, and I can't remember that gentleman's name. But they both have had the same trouble. So I'm hoping that maybe we can direct city staff to take a look at, possibly, they'd have to go and find the location of what I'm, where I'm specifying, and then see if there's some way that we can help them alleviate this situation.
Yeah, the police department has already had a conversation with that resident about that, an extended conversation. And so maybe there's something that can be brought up in the staff meeting, and maybe the police department always had some solution. I know they did have a conversation with that resident.
Very good, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilor Biondich?
Thank you. Is the park, we have a curfew at the park. Is it not locked? Is it, don't they shut the gates? We set the curfew.
At 10:00 PM.
So the gates are shut?
Yeah, but that's the, that was, that just went into effect not too long ago.
Oh, okay, so the gates, it should alleviate the problem.
Traffic loop changed. It changed, became a problem. He's lived there for quite a long time. And when we changed the traffic, that's when the problem occurred, an unintended consequence of our changing the traffic pattern up there.
So just to be clear, the gates do get locked in the evening and opened at night?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And we did, I did talk Mr. Podpesker, too. We did encourage him to call the police when this occurs so that we can also see what they're doing in the park in that later evening, because we want to know what's going on in there, too.
And that does help a little bit, but in the wintertime, when it gets dark at 4:30 in the afternoon, you know, you still got, have that much time left, you know, in that regard, so.
But as long as the gates are locked at night, then we don't have to worry about people being in there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Councilor Paulson, for bringing that up. Any other items of concern to come before the committee of the home meeting today? Seeing none, we will stand adjourned. This committee home meeting, it is 11:38 AM, and we will reconvene for our budget meeting at 1:00 PM. Thank you, everybody. See you at 1:00. We stand adjourned. Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the Virginia City Council chambers. Thank you for everybody who's attending today and has an interest in our budget for 2024, which we'll be discussing in earnest today as our first earnest budget meeting. We have to set a preliminary budget by September 30th this year, so this is the first of several conversations what we have moving forward. For those of you who have not received a copy of the budget analysis and some of the things we'll be discussing today, please raise your hand. We'll try to make some copies for you if you need to. I think we had enough on the table in order to accomplish that. Okay, so we're going to try to have a, an orderly discussion about the 2024 budget, trying to keep our emotions in check, look at the factual basis with respect to the budget, and try to find reasonable solutions, do some comparisons so that we can proffer a budget for 2024 that balances, and there are some difficult decisions to be made along the way. And so I will turn the preliminary budget discussions and rundown of our 2024 budget, and then we'll have questions and comments from the council and then from the audience as well as we move forward. But we want to make sure that we have, everybody has an opportunity to speak, and we respect one another and use professional decorum during our discussions. So I'll turn the beginning of the budget meeting over to Sheri, if you lay out our 2024 budget outline, and then if we need to hear from any of our department heads, we will do so as well. Sheri?
Hi, welcome. Thank you to Council for setting up this budget meeting. In light of the 2022 audit and some of the expenditures in our potential expenditures here, we have been working, when I say we, I mean, [inaudible]. Have gone to, actually, this is my fifth draft on the budget, and always looking for more suggestions. What we're looking at is the general fund operating budget, and I'm just going to give you a little history. 2015, our levy met our budget, but as it has gotten, as the city has grown in size and services, you can see, I don't know if you got this graph, our levy has not kept up, operating levy has not kept up with our budget expenses, and 2022 audit brought that out. So we do have to take into consideration, either we increase the levy to meet our expenses or help meet our expenses, because currently, right now, the existing levy does not even cover our police department of 4.5 million and our fire department of 2.3 million. That sits in the general fund. So that's a problem. So we're here to talk about the setting the general fund levy, which has to be in by September 30th. And yes, we did get an increase in LGA, but realize we have seven departments altogether, not including the enterprises. Enterprise departments are special revenue funds, such as your ambulance, the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, and the Tennis For All Building, that's your special revenue, and then your enterprise funds are your solid waste, Washington Manor Golf Course, Restaurant, Sewer, and then our clinic lease. So Britt, do you want to take it over?
I guess I, my paperwork wasn't the same as it just handed out, so I just want to make sure that they got everything.
What they got was your draft five, Sheri, of your budget?
Draft five.
Draft five?
Oh, draft five, okay. All right, so what the proposed is, is to bring the general operating levy up to meet the fire and the police expenditures. That would be 6.9 million in general fund operating levy. That would just cover your fire and your police. That would be an increase of 1.1,657,296 dollars. And did you send, Britt, did you send out that one, what it would cost for housing, for a home? Do you have that up on your screen?
Sheri, what is the proposed budget for 2024, as Britt acknowledged your last draft?
As the last draft for the general fund, 20,647,554 dollars.
And so that's the proposed budget, correct?
Correct.
And so the anticipated, what was your projected budget for last year, 2023?
2023, we had a 2.7 million dollar equipment bond in there, which brought it to 19,491,039 dollars. For 2022, our budget was 16,000, 16,924,044 dollars. So you can see, we've already increased by 4 million in a matter of two or three years.
So that's what, you know, to make it simplified for the, those are in the audience right now, is to show that, at least to lay a foundation for where we're going and some of the decisions that we have to make for 2024. In 2022, it was 16,924,000, 924,044 dollars. Then in 2023, 19,491 dollars and 39 cents, and projected for 2024 is 20,647 dollars and 5, 504 dollars. So with a, so in the last three years, we've increased our budget by 4 million dollars, right?
Correct.
So might as well get the, get it started a little bit here as we move forward. We have, if you have those figures in front of you, if you don't, how many employees did we have working for us in 2022? Do you know that off the top of your head?
A little over 150.
How many?
A little over 150. That would include part-time and full-time?
Hundred and how much?
1,58.
158, correct?
Correct, that's not public utilities, so.
No, just our budget, 158 employees. How many employees do we have now?
As I said, it was over 150. It's now...
Yeah, so then what do we... Yeah, so then what do, how many employees do we have in 2022? The reason I'm asking this question, because if you don't have it, that's okay. You have it?
I can get it for you like that.
Okay, would you do that for me? Because when you're looking at the increase of 4 million dollars, it has a lot to do with expenditures and approximately 80% of our budget, as you indicated earlier, is salary and benefit packages for our employees. In addition to that, some of the primary drivers of the increase in our budget or the deficit we have comes from fire EMS and the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. So those are the two major entities that we have to take a look at moving forward for 2024. And I think this is the reason we're having this discussion today, in order to take a look at what we have to do to balance our budget and what's it gonna, what percentage is anticipated for our levy increase for 2024. And I'm sure you're going to have that information for us in a few minutes. So, looking at all those things and being at that deficit, we have to make some significant changes. We've added a significant amount of staff moving forward. You know, we have an increase in salary and benefit package, of course, from the contracts that we have. We also have a revenue gap with the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. I know they've been working very hard to try to fill that gap. And as a result, the city council and the mayor and all of us in staff have been trying to find a way in which to market that Iron Trail Motors Event Center to a passion to improve revenue streams. We have had some challenges in finding a marketing director that can spur some additional revenue from, from that moving forward. And we believe that we have a, now a marketing director that's making some progress along those ways to help alleviate that. But we don't know what's going to happen in 2024, so we have to base our figures on what we're, what we're at now and how we're going to improve the service that we provide. So, and I might as well say it, as we are looking forward, there are a lot of things to consider. One was be to a combination of things to try and balance this budget. We have, we have cost-saving measures. There's only two ways to cut costs. I'm not talking about the levy increase. We're talking about if we have to, if we have to cut costs, there's only two places we can cut. Well, three things. We can, we can defer any equipment purchases. We can cut back on our, our, the, the equipment that we currently operate. So we, we have an equipment issue. We freeze those equipment issues. There's salary considerations. There's staff reductions. All those kind of things are things we talk about at every budget, but this is a time that we need to talk about now, huh? Okay, we have, we went from 158 employees to, we had 162 employees last year?
We have 162 total right now. We have 133 full-time and 29 part-timers.
Okay, so it's not 158, it's 162. Okay. And how many employees do we have last year? You know?
No, I do not know offhand. I have it in my file.
So we have, we have 162 employees.
Right.
Of those 162 employees, you have 4.5 million dollar budget for the police, 2.3 for the fire. Is that correct? You had indicated. So anyway, it's, there's about 7 million dollars. So 7 million dollars, we have, what, 38 firefighters, paramedics, EMTs, right around there, or is it more than that?
Don't confuse the ambulance personnel, such as EMTs and single-role paramedics in the fire. This is strictly fire. Firefighters that have to be certified, one and two, they sit in the general fund.
I understand, but I'm just looking at how many employees altogether that's employed in public safety. And the reason I'm asking this question, we do have a fire-public safety building that we're building, and part of that is going to find a, a loan from the USDA. And there's going to be some requirements with respect to that loan, how we fund police and fire. And I know I'm putting you on the spot here, asking a couple of questions, but I just want to lay the foundation for the discussion as we, as we try to figure this out.
So what is your question? You want to know how many firefighters?
We have, how many, we have, how many firefighters, how many employees do we have employed in, in the fire EMS service? And then how many employees do we have employed in the fire, in the police department? Because those two entities are, are critical to how we go about this funding aspect with the USDA loan moving forward. So, and that's a, you know, if you're looking at your, say, 7 million dollars of our budget is in police and fire, correct? And police and fire being a core service, a core service, as well as public works. So, if, if, okay, just to peel away the onion, I'll try to make it simple, a question, if I may. So how much money are we budgeting for, or expended in 2003 for police? How much for fire? And how much for public works? And how much for park and rec?
Okay, now let's get into.
As far as budget, budget from 2023?
That would be on your second page here of expenses.
Okay.
You'll see police and fire under the public safety.
Yes, public safety, yes, thank you.
And then on the bottom or third page is going to be your special revenue fund, which you're going to see the ambulance.
Right.
And that's in addition to what's sitting in the general fund.
Right. So I'm looking at expenditures now, and then we'll talk about the revenue stream to offset some of those expenditures moving forward. I'm simply trying to lay a, set a foundation. So we have some discussion for the people who are in the audience today. There's been some confusion. I received some emails that were completely inaccurate about information about the budget, and some that were pretty close, not very many, one or two, two, I think. But just to lay these concerns and the fears that people have about that our, that our budget is out of control and that, you know, we're going to go bankrupt. And that's, it seems to be the general public's analogy of it. And I've received calls about that. I hear from this person, tells me this, and then they got a call from somebody else. So just to lay out the foundation is, we have, we had this in 2008, 2012, and the budget's always been a challenge. So that's why I asked this, Sheri.
Good. So the fire, to answer your question, the fire ambulance currently has 41, and that would include single roles and firefighter, paramedics.
Right.
And dual roles firefighter, EMTs.
Okay.
For the police, there is 22 officers, and adding two more, the chief and the deputy chief, make it 24.
24 altogether?
24 altogether.
Okay, and then one more, two more. How many employees do we have in public works?
Yeah, the employee sheet, Britt, for public works, is that would include the streets, the garbage?
Yes, all, all, the total, that's all. I don't need to break down.
I need.
Works where?
32. 32, including our two summer students.
32?
Including our two summer students who are still.
Yeah, 32, including two summer students, okay. Thank you. And then two more, of park and rec, just to give employees now, full-time and part-time, both. And then I'm going to be asking you later on to provide a breakdown of how many part-timers we have altogether. And then the last item would be, how many library employees do we have? So we have them broke down into, for the most part, and then, then the rest are administrative.
In the library, we have 10 full-time equivalent and two part-timers. That's what I budgeted.
I'm sorry, 10 full-time library and two part-time?
Two part-time.
Eight, 12 altogether.
That does not count the intern. Intern is sometimes give or take.
And so, park and rec?
Rec, most of the rec sit in the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, and then the park, I will get that for you.
I guess, just, it's just for the, the public so they understand where our employees are, how many employees we have. We have a core group of people, and I guess the point I'm trying to make the bottom line is, we only, we had 158 employees last year. We have 162 this year. So, I mean, salary and benefit package outside the, the contract adjustments, so. Looking at the expenditure aspect of it, so, not with respect to the employees, but where are we at? So there's really only, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, Sheri.
We have 18 in the Iron Trail Motor Event Center, full-time equivalent. And then we scheduled $125,000 for part-timers. And Britt, how many do we currently have as part-timers?
18.
18, okay.
So 18, that's Iron Trail Motors, but how, how many park and rec people do we have altogether? Right? And that'll be my last question, Sheri. I appreciate your patience.
Sorry, I just wish I would have known these questions earlier. I would have been well-prepared.
Well, that's why we have the budget discussion, to ask these questions. And I appreciate your patience and thank you for looking these up for us. And I understand that.
Offhand, I know we have three full-time equivalent in the park. There will be some summer student or part-time, but just three full-time.
I appreciate your patience, Sheri. Thank you very much. I just want to lay the foundation. So, that being said, I'll go around the, the rest of the council for their questions, comments about the proposed budget as before today in our first regularly scheduled budget meeting. Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for breaking that out, Sheri, for employees. I do have a question. When I was looking at our, the financials from, I guess it would have been like the July financials, each department is listed. And then we have, under park and rec, under that PD, or the Excel spreadsheet, we have listed rec employees, zero, park employees, the budget for 2023, 234,000 for full-time, and then 30,000 for part-time. Do those ITMEC employees are that, is that, I guess what I'm trying to understand is the breakdown of who those, who those park employees are at a total of, and this is for 23 budget, you know, period, but 234,000 is budgeted as park employees, and then we also, also have the ITMEC employees. And I'm just wondering if you could help me understand how you allocate those in, in terms of where you put the employees in relative to the budget?
So the park has its own code, and offhand, I don't remember what the fund number is, but it's in the general fund, so it's 101. And Britt, do you have the park expense code?
I do not, no.
Okay. Well, it's a separate five-digit code from the recreation. Recreation is 101 45110. That's all the expenses for the recs.
So under the, like, I'm just looking at the, and I'm sorry, Mayor, I'm just trying to break this down a little bit further, in terms of where we are allocating, even just for discussion sake, for our 24 budget year. I'm trying to understand, how are we allocating employees with their salaries in which, so we've got zero in rec, we have 234,000 in park, that's the full-time. So when you said we might have three, is that rec employees?
In the park department, we have 3.5 staff. Half of Brian's wage comes out of there, and three full-time employees that are utility workers are in the park, because they are based at the park. They have their offices in that building next to the greenhouse.
Okay, so it's 3.5 FTEs in, under the park heading.
Correct.
And then the rest of those employees are listed in the ITMEC budgeting.
Correct.
Is that right?
When you said there was zero in the recreation.
Zero.
Those salaries are in the ITMEC, which is under a special revenue, which is 200, 260.
Yep, okay, so.
That's going to be on your second page, under, or your third page, whatever, how it printed out, where it's going to say special revenue up here. You're going to see ITMEC.
So I just was trying to clarify in my mind how these, how the employees are being allocated under which department subtitle.
So in the past, we used to have about $900,000 sitting in salaries in the recreation. The salaries have moved over to the Iron Trail Motors.
Got it. Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. And then, Mayor, if I may just, I have just a few questions.
Please, this is what we're doing here.
Starting our process here.
Yeah, thank you.
So when I look at, I think what, what is a little maybe concerning to me, and I understand, Mayor, what you're saying is, we're going and we're looking at our total budget, 2022 went from 16,8, 2023 went to 19,4, and then 2024 is the proposed of 20 million 647,000. But if you go above, so that, so your revenues, I guess, let's look at the revenues. So the revenues in 2022 were 10 million 3, revenues in '23, 10 million 3, expected revenues in '24, 11.47 million. Then go up a column above that to the proposed tax levy, we are looking at the 2022 tax levy was set at 3%, an increase of 6.4 million. 2023 budget, which the levy was set at, was for 6.364, so 6 million 364,000. And I don't have a percentage increase on that, but I think it was like 5.8. Am I correct on that? It's, it's in the other sheet, when you have historical levy information, and I want to say, I think it was 5.8%. But now, when we jump to 2024, excuse me, we're going so 6.4 million, 6.3 million. Now the proposed levy, because of the gap, is 9.176 million. And that's where I think I'd like to, like, that's where I think all of our focus of our concerns are, is, yes, the, the budget, the actual annual budget isn't, is increasing slowly. But what we're being asked to allocate in terms of a levy increase is significantly higher, even from year '22 to '23, and now from '23 to '24. Then my next question, so that's a concern. My next question is, when we call the transfer from the reserve, so I'm under other revenues, it's a pink highlighted line, it says transfer from reserves to general fund. it's a pink highlighted line, it says transfer from reserves to general fund of $270,000. Now, that's not revenue, that's just a transfer in. It's not, it's not necessarily revenue, it's not taking money in, like fees and fines and tax, it's an actual transfer in, so we're still not balanced on that, on that item in our budget. Am I understanding that correctly?
Mayor?
Yes, Sheri, please.
So, Councilor, I, I'm going to back the train up, because I think you got some confusion going here. Let's get back up to the levy. The levy is the general fund operating levy that, that we want to cover just police and fire at 6.9 million. Then we have a special levy for VITA. That's based on your market value, and that's 64,974. We can't change that. That's.
Right.
What it is. We have a special levy, P&amp;H tax abatement. So out of their taxes that P&amp;H pays, we're asking the state for 150,000 out of that to pay for the bond that we took out in 2013 for them. That's 100% abatement. We're not going to see any tax from that, that's a 20-year abatement, so you've got a little time yet.
Sure. And those, those are relatively equal from '22, '23, and '24, they're relatively equal.
Right. And then the debt levy for bonds 20A and 20B for the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, to build that, sales tax, you see it's zero. That would be close to a million dollars, right there, payment. But it's zero because of the sales tax that's collected.
Correct.
The debt levy for our first 21, 20A Street and Alley project, the budget, that's a debt levy, I have to budget that because there's a bond out on that, 21, 20A, $273,392. Now, we have to anticipate the public safety building, it's going to be a little over a million dollars a year to make that payment. Now, when we first started this USDA loan, it was 1.45, that was three years ago. But we now finally got a sealed deal, and it's around 3%. So our levy, I mean, our interest rate doubled, so it doubled the payment, so figure. Now, we can call this after, I think it's five years. We can call, if the interest rates drop, which they usually do, they go up and down, we can have it refinanced. Now, here's all your debt service. The GO Series 2023 equipment bond that we just got this year, that's $437,851. Lease, police radios and tasers, as I say, 30,000. Fire hall radios, $24,148. We have a lease with the Public Works Sweepers and Loaders, $141,720. That debt I have to put in there, you have to levy for that. That's how you get the 9.176.
Right. And I, I'm just saying, I think that's why we're here today, because it's such a significant increase in what this council would have to look into in terms of raising the levy. And at that, at that point, what does the, the original budget sheets we had gotten, maybe last week was about 11% budget increase, or, excuse me, levy increase?
Mm-hmm.
So if we look on the proposed tax levy, the, the bottom number here is 44.2%. Now you have to take out, what is the, what would the total, I guess, total proposed levy be percentage-wise?
For total proposed, it's an increase of 44%.
So we're being asked to increase our levy, that in the past, we've done 3%, 2%, 3%.
That hasn't met with the operating budget.
Mm-hmm. So we're, what we're, what we're being asked to do is increase our levy by 44%?
But that also includes the, I thought I had another year before we had to pay on the USDA, but no, it's going to start next year. So that, you'll see a million dollars in there.
Right. And I realize that.
That increased it from the 11% that was shot out last week.
Right.
And then back to your question down here, transfer in from reserves to general fund, we have yet to do that. It's there to balance the budget, because I have to send in a balanced budget, and there is, you know, from other funds, reserves.
Sure.
We have yet to transfer in 660,000, you know, thousand there in 2023, or 367,000 in 2022. We haven't done that.
Okay.
We've managed to either, you know, expenses didn't quite need it. So, but it is getting a little tight. You've got some expenses here.
Yep, and that's what the auditor brought to light, which is kind of why I wanted to address that one specific line item. And then the last question I had, just for right now, sake of conversation, is I don't see an amount budgeted as a transfer out from the general fund to the ambulance. Where, where would I find that? Because that's also something that we've, we just transferred in almost 500,000 not that long ago, and like a million to the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. So is that, will that be reflected on?
I know that I had the Iron Trail Motors on the expense under recreation, $1.2 million transferred out.
Right. But I'm not seeing, unless I missed it, I'm not seeing a transfer out from the general fund to the ambulance.
I actually had it in the revenue part here, but it's not added in, so it doesn't duplicate, but it's added in the ambulance revenue, and then the expenses under the special revenue. It ends up being like 48,000 to the good.
And Sheri, I'm sorry, is that on the expenditures or on the revenue side?
It's under the expenditures, under the enterprise. And if we don't put it down now, you'll remember we had transfers, we had housekeeping, transfers to, due to, due from in April, after the audit, then that's when the general fund will do a transfer, if need be. And like I mentioned before, the ambulance has been running in a deficit of about $500,000 a year for some time. And every year, we, the general fund zeros it out. So we're on a zero-based budget, so it starts zero.
Okay.
Otherwise, they would, they would owe us quite a bit.
Sheri, am I looking at, should I be finding it under the public safety on the second page?
No, no, no. The ambulance is a separate fund.
Yep, I'm seeing it in the.
It's, I believe, Fund 270.
Yep. So we're, so if I go to 2024 budget, how much are we saying that we will be transferring in from the general fund?
A little over 500,000. I had it, I had the number in there, but Britt thought it would cause too much confusion, so we took it out. It's in the total.
But shouldn't that number be in there, because we have to account for how much we're transferring into the ambulance? Because we just approved the transfer, like, I don't know, a couple months ago.
Yeah, but I don't want to duplicate it.
What now?
I don't want to duplicate it, so don't, it's already in the total revenue.
In the sum of the revenue for the ambulance on the revenue side? It's in that total dollar amount, so in the 3.401 million they plan for revenue, it includes 500,000 from the general fund.
But how can that be considered revenue if it's being, if it's transferred from reserves?
It's going to be a transfer out, depending on how much at year end, but.
That's still not a revenue stream, that's a transfer.
Correct.
Correct.
So that, I would, I think that needs to be accounted for in our budgetary paperwork. And now, those are just the questions that I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Paulson. Anybody else on the council? A councilor Motley.
So, Sheri, when we've talked in the past, was it 2009 or something, when the city was it?
2008, when the LGA was cut.
And you guys, I know it's kind of, fast forward, it's a lot different now than it was back then, but what did you do then in order to balance this out?
Well, for one, we didn't have as many employees. But two, we asked every department to take a 10% cut. Unfortunately, LGA went on for like four years, cut. It wasn't until we seen an increase in 2013. So that's, that could be another reason why, you know, we were stagnant. Couldn't buy equipment, couldn't, you know, we had to then take out a bond, equipment bond, just like we did this year, because we were piecemealing equipment.
Would that be possibly something we'd be looking at now, as a possible remedy to something with, with our budget going forward?
What do you mean?
A 10% decrease, or asking the departments to take a 10% de, I mean, is that going to ruin the equipment bond and everything, or like, I mean, this is?
You're going to have to generate revenue, and then you are going to have to cut. That's the only way I can see it. You're going to have to generate revenue plus cut. And then my question is, what services do you want to cut? There's some departments that are not over budget.
I won't, why I was surprised to see when we got the employee totals for our library, I mean, I'm just randomly, not trying to pick on the library, but 10 full-time employees in the library, two part-time employees, total of 12. That was surprising to me, I did not know that until today. And then the 36 employees, 18 full-time, 18 part-time, I guess technically at the ITMEC. Are they running 36, so that'd be 36, are you, is that running 36 employees 24 months of the year? Even when there's only one rink potentially, or?
You mean 12 months a year?
I mean, sorry, 12 months a year, I mean, are, do we cut staff at all with less business?
Is Brian in the audience? Brian, you want to answer your questionnaire on scheduling?
Brian Silver, our Park and Rec Director. Brian, thank you for being here today. Could you kind of give the councilor Motley a synopsis of her question? The 18 full-time employees that are in the event center are full-time employees, 12 months out of the year. That includes our utility workers, our custodians, building maintenance, and office staff. So, and they are, they are in the building 12 months out of the year, and we've got ICE 11 months out of the year, so I'm.
But only one rink running?
Only one rink running, yes.
But the same staff, more or less 12 months a year?
Yes. And remember, during the summer months, utility workers that maintain the ICE also are doing other projects, not only in the building, but throughout the city. City council received a complaint of city staff mowing grass on weekends. The public member thought that it was, we were mowing grass on overtime. No, we were using the event center staff to be cutting grass, so they do have duties outside of the building also.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Anybody else right now, a councilman beyond ditch?
Thank you. And I, I guess this budget became very apparent when we did get our audit report back stating, and I'll quote, this is from our management letter from Walker, June, and Hani. "The public utilities, hospital, solid waste disposal, and golf course enterprise funds reported operating losses of $4,554,320." I won't quote, all four of those have operating losses. The last, the last paragraph, paragraph that kind of startled me was, "Three major governmental funds had large decreases in fund balances for the year end of 2022. The general fund reported a decrease of $2,443,770 in fund balances, and reported an excess of expenditures over budget of $385,000." It goes on with the ambulance special revenue fund, and the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. And we all knew going into the Iron Trail Motors Event Center that there would be a period where we would not make that amount of money. But the reported in excess of expenditures over budget was $1.2 million. These funds must be reviewed and monitored to prevent future decreases in fund balances. This report from our auditor, I take very seriously. And we need to make changes. We need to do something. And I think that's what brought us all to this budget meeting, that we do have hard decisions to make, to bring all of this back in to manage. But the over expenditures, and I, and I know we look at our departments that, and I've asked this question before, when a department stays within their budget, great. If they don't stay within their budget, nothing happens. And I, I don't understand that. When you're given a budget, and I get it, the budgets may change, the, the numbers move, but we're losing control of what is happening in some of the departments. So I, for me, I am not in favor of raising that levy that high. Our taxpayers, I, I can't put that on, I can't put this on the taxpayer. This is something we as a council, and when I said before, we have hard decisions to make, this is going to be one of them. But I will stand with the taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Beyondich. So I'd just like to tack on to what Councilor Beyondich had indicated. So, looking at the, the cuts, you know, if we don't raise the levy by 9.5% or whatever, that could be projected, or less or more, but right around there. So you're looking at making cuts, and the only cuts come only, if we don't raise the levy to balance the budget, cuts come in a variety of areas. But the main question that I have would be, first of all, is that now that we've committed in to this new public safety building, and we are getting a low interest loan through the United, USDA hopefully, but we were surprised by the requirement by the USDA, we never had to do this before. We have, our budget, less revenue, has to, we have to cover the entire cost of public safety in our budget in order to qualify for the USDA loan. Is that correct, Britt?
It was the recommendation from the USDA.
It's a recommendation.
That your budget, your levy amounts at least cover your public safety.
The levy amount has to cover our public safety. So if you're saying our public safety is 4.32, 2.3, so you're looking at about $7 million, $8 million altogether, correct? Right around there? So we would have to make sure that whatever we levy in the budget in order to accommodate the recommendation, is that we have to make sure that we have, cover that money expenditures in the, the public safety budget. So my question is, the difference between the $8 million that's suggested by the USDA only gets the one interest loan without using revenue and other fees and services coming in, what's, Sheri, in your estimate, what is the difference between the two? What additional monies would we have to generate just in our budget? What would we have to increase just in our budget to accommodate the USDA loan based upon 2023, and what we have to do in 2024 with respect to covering the public safety budget?
That number is proposed at $6,954,139. That just would cover the police and fire, which sits in the general fund.
At $7 million, right?
Roughly, yeah, a little under $7 million.
Right around there, right.
And I did ask the St. Louis County auditor to give me proposals of what residential and commercial tax would look like for that amount. And I, I believe Britt's got them on her computer.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. And so the other question that I have relates to the, the over budget expenditures. Now, there's nothing we have been able to do, although there's may have been a significant effort to go down to the state legislature and lobby for additional funding for rural ambulance services, and in 2020. And in 2020, 2002, there was a big report by the Minnesota Department of Health on rural ambulance services and the crisis that they're experiencing. Since that study came out in 2002, the state has done nothing to accommodate rural ambulance service. So because we operate an ambulance service with an estimated service area of about 640 square miles or more, that we have to cover the cost of emergency services there. So when our ambulance goes out to the county, we get reimbursed by Medicare about $400 bucks a month, or $400 a run, right around there. Is that correct? Right around there, $400 a month. And then if we assume the rural county area, the county gives us money for every ambulance run, and the amount of was $16 a run. And it increased this last year after our request to only $24 a run. So if you take a look at the Medicare reimbursement plus the county, if it's on the county reimbursement at, say, for example, $500 is roughly a figure. And it costs us $1,500 to $2,000 or more to operate the ambulance, so you understand where that deficit comes from. Because you can only recover so much private pay and so much insurance, the Medicare costs are overwhelming. And I, you know, I don't want to pick on anybody in the audience, but Wendy, who's a very, Wendy Summers, who was with our finance department, who knows well, well aware of the issues we've had with the ambulance service and how that works. And so that's a huge challenge for us. That's a big deficit that we have in our budget every year. We've chosen to continue to have this kind of a service available to us and to have six-minute response to ALS EMS services. So that's an issue. There's not much we've been able to do about it over the years, although we continue to try and we'll begin in legislative session. As far as police go, law enforcement services, I think our budget has been pretty steady with respect to that. There have been a lot of unfunded mandates by the state in Minnesota with respect to the kind of equipment you have to carry, the cost of training, and all those kinds of things that we have to allocate in our budget. And it's a, in order for law enforcement to maintain their license to practice law enforcement, we have, that's an increasing fee moving forward. In the scheme of things, it's not, you know, it's not going to, it's not breaking the budget, but it's another unfunded mandate expenditure. Same thing with the wastewater treatment plan, all these chemicals that are funded by, required by the state in Minnesota, where you're looking at $80, $90,000 a year more, and we can't recover that cost, it kind of has to come out of our budget. So all these expenditures are continuing to pile up. And so we have to find a way in which to balance our budget. And there's really only a few ways we can do it. You cut expenditures, and by cutting staff, by cutting services, by cutting equipment, or by raising your levy. And that's where we're here today to talk about how we're going to be, accomplish those goals and objectives. For me, yeah, we have to make the difficult decisions. But if you cut staff, you cut services. If you cut the purchase of equipment, emergency equipment, not one equipment you want, you cut your ability to provide services. So is that what we have to do? That's where we're here to discuss, what can we do to avoid and maintain, you know, our level of services for the city at the same time, trying to find a way in which to reduce the cost of our budget internally? So, Councilor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start by reminding folks that every expenditure of the city is approved in this room. So I'm not shocked by anything that was presented to us. I've been keeping an eye on things, obviously. This report was dated, it ended December 31, and the report came to us in August. That's eight months of whatever. The report states, "The purpose of this report is solely to describe the scope of our testing of internal control over financial reporting and compliance with results of that testing, and not to provide an opinion on the effectiveness of the City of Virginia, Minnesota's internal control over fiscal, pardon me, financial reporting or on compliance." And after the meeting two weeks ago, and opinions offered by our consultant, that is not what I got out of that meeting. I feel there's this perceived panic that we're going, we're losing money and going to shut down is, I don't understand where that's coming from. In the supplementary information, the general fund, the difference was $385,000 in some dollar bills. 385 out of a $30 million budget is, and these things were adjusted. We should not have our city staff in tears because the budget or the report was negative. It is not the fault of any of our staff. We are the ones who need to be on responsibility for this, and I accept that. But I don't feel that we should be having staff being compared to other staff. We can't compare this year to last year when it comes to our staffing. Our staff do a phenomenal job based on the direction of this body. This body is the one that approves every single purchase. We do it based on the recommendation of the department heads, who are in complete control of their budgets, and they know what it looks like. And this council and councils prior never want to raise taxes. Nobody wants to pay more. But if we want the services that we're used to, we may need to look at what that looks like. If you want quality, you have to pay for quality. If we want an amazing fire department, full-time, on-call, 24/7, we need to pay for that. Yes, it would be really nice if the state and the county would pitch in more and value what we do. This morning, first day of school, I was listening to the scanner on the drive from Evlith to Virginia, and at one point, the hall was empty because of the number of calls that we were responding to, both within the City of Virginia and outside. And Evlith was on standby for a medical thing. So this is more than just some numbers that were presented to us at a meeting a month ago. This is about the day-to-day operation, and our staff have a great grasp of what it is, and that they're coming to us and saying, "These are your options," I think is exactly what they're supposed to be doing. We've had discussion, we had a discussion earlier today about quote-unquote, giving away a room for $25. That kind of stuff doesn't, is not helping this problem. It's a bigger problem, perceived problem, I would venture to say, about what are we expecting from folks? What are we expecting to accomplish in a year of budgeting? And what do we need to do? Again, it's a snapshot at the end of the year. There were, there were transfers. There's transfers every year. Whether those transfers happen before the audit or after the audit is what we're looking at today and in this report. But they always, there has always been transfers, always. It's how you balance, balance things at the end of a business year. And again, we're in the government business, and that always looks different. You know, we, increasing the levy is just a small portion of our taxes. We are lucky enough to have LGA, which increased. We are lucky enough to have some other revenues. As we move forward on the budget, one of the things I'd really like us to be able to do is specifically, especially when it comes to Parks and Rec and the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, really set some affinity between them. We're paying, we're paying Brian's salary out of both. Is Brian, sorry, the Parks and Rec, I apologize, the Parks and Rec Director, whomever that might be, we're paying that. So for the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, we're paying several levels of management. And in the Park Department, are we paying, I think we're paying one level of management. And so maybe there needs to be some, some adjustment and some splitting of exactly what does Iron Trail Motors look like, what falls under Rec, what falls under Park, and how do we budget that so we can make strategical, surgical decisions rather than cut everybody by 10% or however that works? So that's one of the things I'd like to see happen. I will say again that I don't feel like we've lost control. If we've lost control, it's the seven elected officials in this room that have lost control, but I don't see that. We get reports, multiple reports every month about bills and what's coming in and what's coming out and where the budget sits. And uptill, somebody told us, "I have big concerns about this." Nobody in this room had big concerns that they were voicing regularly, except for Councilor Beyondich, but nothing specific. There was no, oh, this is, this is a challenge, we're going to lose money, we're going to shut down. The city is nowhere close to shutting down. I, if that was the case, I am absolutely positive and trust that our two non, our two, the city administrator and the finance director would be much more adamant about how we need to move forward. Government isn't running your household budget. Government isn't running a business budget. It's not running a small business. When I ran a small business, I had sole control over a lot of things, and I could make decisions. Large businesses, and I'm talking millions of dollars, which we are, there's minutia in every decision. There's, there's things that need to be considered. So as we move forward with the budget, I'm going to be looking for some specifics on how do we generate more revenue and where we need to cut, if we need to cut. How does that affect the services? There's a lot of things we can do, but there's going to be consequences thereafter. And I think we need to be very open to any kind of suggestions that come forward. And the staff, the city administrator says regularly, if there's an increase to a budget, a department budget, it's up to the department head to figure out how that's going to work. If we, if we decide to, if we decide to buy something that is deemed needed, where do we cut that? Somewhere else. And that's what the department heads do. And we compensate them well for their professionalism, for their years of experience, and we need to, I believe we need to start trusting them and really going with what they're doing instead of trying to manage everything they're doing and let them show us where we need to be. So I would like to see, as we move forward, a combination like we have, was mentioned of some cuts and some creative other, other action steps that can be taken. The City of Virginia is nowhere near shutting down at the end of the calendar year, and that, that I too, Mayor, have heard that there's people who are very concerned about what happens, and the process would, we're not at a make it or break it point. We're at a point now where we can make this manageable moving forward, and we can seriously make sure that we're doing what's best for the citizens and our staff. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Johnson. I have a question for Sherry. Please, if you could just kind of, you are a Brit, just give us a little snapshot. And, you know, the angst about the 2022 audit, you know, the reports that the auditor gave us moving forward, it was based on 2022. We're all, we're in August of 2023, so I'm looking for a snapshot from you about where we were in 2022, are we better positioned in 2023? And are we positioning ourselves to be more cognizant and better in 2024? But I'm looking for the, you know, the snapshot was 2022. That was, we had some expenditures, we had some other things going on. We made some commitments. Back in the day, we had some money, that revenue that didn't come in, now we have revenue coming in. So I'm looking at, give us a little snapshot, you know, about, you know, what, what Councilor Johnson indicated, you know, is that, you know, we have a budget, we have to maintain our budget, we have to look at some of the cuts that we have to make if we need to do so. So I'm looking for, if you could give us some kind of comparison, Sherry? And I'm going to step out for a moment. Councilor Paulson, if you could take over one of my absences. Thank you.
I'm going to have to say that the Iron Trail Motors has brought in $445,000 so far, but we have spent $1.4 million. So that is going to be another issue on your audit. We do have a proposed of a $1.2 transfer, $1 million transfer in for 2023. So that's still in a deficit. The next one is your restaurant. And I'm going to be brutally honest here, don't mean to offend anybody, but the lease is not bringing in enough to cover the utilities. Something's got to be done about that. Your tennis for all, that's been habitually running in a deficit. And solid waste, that is a little bit, little bit better, but we've, you know, we've increased the garbage rates, so it's helped some, but yeah, it was not good. The sewer, we've raised the rates, and as, just as we raised the rates, you know, our chemicals have doubled from what I budgeted for this year. That is beyond our control. I know we discussed bringing a tanker in, just the transportation on some of those chemicals is ridiculous. Washington Manor is doing fine. Dana budgets and manages that very well. And the ambulance fund, it's probably going to be projected to be a half a million, but we've known that. And this is where I say our ambulance crew is a five-star ambulance. You couldn't, you couldn't compare them really with anybody in the area or in the state because they are, they cover a lot of ground. And they go beyond the city limits. They, they go all the way up into my neck of the woods. And they're professionals, they're, they're paramedics. And I really, once again, going to throw it out there, but we need a taxing district. And I know there's a lot of rural cities and a lot of rural townships that are more than willing because they're all struggling, and they need class act service. But we need to get out there and start lobbying, getting a taxing district so everybody pays, everybody, not just the citizens of Virginia, but everybody pays when, you know, like they say, more hands make the work go lighter. I'm serious. More taxes for everybody who enjoys that benefit helps, helps the burden. And I don't know where to start. We've talked about it a lot, but I want to start seeing some action. We need to see the, this change. That's about it.
So just to touch base, we've made every conceivable effort we can so far to try to lobby the legislation for a taxing district to, you know, I touched on the 2002, we're critical ambulance report, that was one of the things. We had a legislator that was willing to proffer legislation, which he did do, but it was a levy that was voluntary on the part of the townships. Well, nobody would voluntarily contribute to the taxing district to, for ALS service, which would be very minimal to them, a house payer. I can't remember, back in the day was like $4 a year. But we can't get a legislator, and we still are lobbying our local legislators to try to introduce a bill. And there's a lobbyist down there for fire EMS, Bud McAlpin. And Bud McAlpin's been working hard to try to do the same thing. We just have not been successful. And we are, we're an anomaly as far as ambulance service goes. We're talking about ambulance credit because it's, because we, we do fund it to the point of a deficit, but we're the only game in town here. Hibbing's got some, but they don't, they don't cover nearly the area that we do. They have part-time as we do. But we have a staff that provides six-minute response time. So we have it in the city, and the citizens have been supporting a full-time fire EMS service in the City of Virginia because that's, some of the reasons, that's why they live here. You get immediate ALS response. If you have a heart attack or your, your family has, if you want somebody that's got ALS service, that doesn't just provide the ABCs, the airway breathing and circulation, they provide onboard medical treatment to help save your life. That's why we have it here. And so we have to find a way to fund it. And we're doing that in the City of Virginia through our budget. All other efforts to try to get additional funding have failed. We have not been able to get the legislature onboard, nor St. Louis County for that matter. So that's where we're at. And I just want to touch base on that. Oh, I concur, we all concur in the thing, citizens concur, we're very professional staff, but we have a fine, a way to help supplement the revenue stream moving forward. So, thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. So it, it kind of appears that we've got maybe three areas or more, but, well, we have several departments that are, now if we count, include the tennis for all, we have several areas that we need to improve in. Some of the big items are obviously the public safety building. Some of the big items are obviously the public safety building with the $1 million and obviously the ITMEC. And so what I did is I pulled some, I pulled the old email out from Isaac's Sports Group with the pro forma. And I would like just to give a suggestion, if I may. These numbers are not accurate because at the time, the new construction debt service was 24 million and I think we ended up at 40 million, I believe. And it's amortized over 20 years at 3.15%. I don't know what our interest rate landed at. But I'm wondering if Sheri, if we could use that, start using that as like a guideline spreadsheet where we could put numbers in there to under, to better understand how that building is operating. And I, I sent it to Pam so she can resend it out to everybody, but it, it does break it down. So we, we knew we would be in deficit there, you know, up to like, I think they, I think at first they said eight years and we thought we could do it in five, from conversations that I remember us having. But if you go to that email, it breaks down like every single space. And I don't know if Brian is, yeah, Brian is here. I don't know if Brian, if you remember that, that spreadsheet. It's not accurate right now, but I'm not sure if we could use that as a tool to help us understand, like I would almost, as a business person, I would say like, where are profit and losses in what, you know, they, they go to like, from your utilities and your ice plant, like they, they really do a good job kind of isolating the areas. So like when we anticipated or projected budget last year at $500,000 for the ballroom, we, we didn't, we failed miserably at that. Not failed, but I mean, we did not even come close to that. So I just, I'm, I'm going to kind of highlight a few things on the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, if I might, if I can find where I wrote them all down though. So from the 2023 budget to the 2024 budget in our, we got an email and I'm not sure, we got a couple of different emails. So it's regarding the 2024, I'm not sure which draft it is, Sheri, budgeting for the Iron Trail Motors Event Center specifically. And there's significant decreases and I'm just going to read the decreases in terms of the dollar amounts. So I'm not going to go what the budget is versus the decrease and equals the total. I'm just going to state what we're being, what the projected decrease is for the 2024 proposed budget for the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. So a decrease or deduction of $2,000 revenue for the bumper cars, a deduction of $110,000 revenue for the concessions, a deduction or decrease in food sales of $13,000, a decrease or deduction, a reduction of ballroom rental sales of $321,000, arena rental reduction $122,000, special event revenue $35,000 decrease and sponsorships a $50,000 decrease. So if we go to what, and I'll take it to the next step, and what the proposed, what that sheet stated was that we were going to be decreasing salaries by $158,379.71. And that would be full-time salaries and then decreasing part-time salaries $100,000 even. So I'd like to get a little bit of clarification on that. And then I guess as a possible suggestion to utilize the spreadsheet that Isaac's Sports Group did procure and, or proffer to us, maybe we could use that as a tool going forward as we are looking at the overall budget for the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. But I'm specifically, if we're going to be decreasing the column of revenue, also decreasing the salaries, both full-time, part-time, I'm not sure what that means. And then, but we're, yet we're still transferring in $1.2 million on our expense side, on our expenditures under culture, culture and recreation. And I have a question, why that should be labeled under culture and recreation and why it shouldn't just have its own line item of the Iron Trail, the ITMEC so we can understand? Because it's, in parentheses, it says fireworks.
Mayor?
And then it says 1.267 million, so 67,000 fireworks and $1.2 million transferring in to balance that Iron Trail Motors Event Center budget.
I wanted whoever looked at this budget, specifically the council, to realize that it used to sit in the recreation department.
Right.
There was close to $1 million in the recreation department for salaries and benefits and operation. So that's why we put it up there so you could see under rec fireworks is roughly 18,000. That's for the two fireworks.
I think what I'm requesting that would make more sense to me in terms of how I interpret these budgets is for the Iron Trail Motors Event Center to have its own line item specifically so we can cost out from that, you know, fireworks is different, that's a culture and recreation, but the Iron Trail Motors Event Center is our only department that can operate as, like it, like a business entity. And so I'd like to have it separated like that so it makes sense.
And I understand, but you're asking the general fund in this budget to transfer 1.2 million so that I had to show that as an expense. It's a balancing act. Had to transfer, this is an expense sheet.
Right.
It's going for health offset the Iron Trail Motors, which is in the special revenue.
Right. So if you go and look at the budget sheet that I was just referencing with all of those decreases to all of those line items, you're still at a deficit at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. You're still at a deficit, even with the 1.2 million dollar transfer.
We did sit down and Brian and his staff with Britt, and we did sit down and we went line for line item in the revenue and the expense. This is what we came up with.
Thank you, Mayor. It's, okay, and that, that's, it's reflected like as a total budget for right, for here, but if we're breaking it down, the Isaac Sports Group, they have a wonderful tool for us to be able to use. So I'm hoping, and maybe it's just me in my own interpretation of how you're putting these numbers in here, but it's very hard for me to make, to, to understand how come the Iron Trail Motors Event Center isn't treated like one specific entity and then all cost coding that's associated with that would go under that heading. It's not a park, it's not a rec, it is the ITMEC. And that's the only department. I mean, while we have other departments that can do fines and fees and things like that, but this is the one department that we really need to look at, what are concession stand costs, what are employee costs, part, you know, so this, this is an ebb and flow. It's a, it's more of a business model in a government entity than, than a government department, if you can understand where I'm coming from with that.
Right. And I did use the Isaac, this, the sheet you're talking about, they had suggested $500,000 for the ballroom, which is totally, so that is not the way I do a budget. I don't base it on someone who hasn't even met me. Come in and give me figures when they don't see the actual monthly report, what they've done the year before, where they're going now and do a proposed budget.
And Sheri?
So this proposed budget is based on what the money is coming in and what the expenses are going out.
Yep. And I get that. I think this sheet was created, the sheet that you're referring to, I'm not sure if that was from Isaac's, but the pro forma that Britt had sent out from a while back in the event center, they projected at year two, which would be 2023, events at $75,438. They projected out at 2023 would be $236,500 in ice arena rental and usage. So I'm not sure, it's, it seems like there's two conflicting documents here with some different projection figures on there. But I feel if we use this as a template, we could get some more realistic projections to assist us in our planning and our budget, overall budget planning.
And, and it's not saying I won't look at it, but that was created how many years ago? I, I like.
I'm just saying we have a spreadsheet ready to plug numbers into.
Yeah, but I'm not going to shoot pie in the sky when we don't have the revenue coming in. I'm going to be as realistic as possible. The revenue is not there.
Right. And I, this was what I questioned from the very, very beginning at putting ballroom sales at 500,000. I knew that was not attainable. Therefore, we were not only going to be transferring in a million, but whatever we didn't make up is going to be a deficit, which is going to have to be transferred in from the general fund to cover that deficit in that department.
Help me understand. You're asking me to go back to that paperwork that has the $500,000 ballroom from Isaacson Sport and ask me to put that as the budget?
No, that's, you can update, update the pro forma with current numbers.
I don't have that formula.
I do, I can, I can update that for you, Julianne.
Okay.
I get what you're saying. And I just want to point out too that this is not the only business type fund we have. Anything that's a special revenue fund or non-enterprise fund, those are business accounts, business activities is what they call them in the audit. So those do have, the, the three special revenue funds is ambulance, Iron Trail Motors Event Center and tennis for all.
Tennis for all.
And so those three should have a similar kind of a profit and loss statement. And then enterprise fund also has a profit and a loss statement. So then when we start looking at these things, the tennis building is, while we're not picking on it or picking on the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, we put money into it every single year because it's never made its profit either. So the general fund has always put money into that. General funds always put money to golf. General funds.
May I thank, thank you for clarifying. That's kind of what I'm looking for going forward as we plan our budget so we understand that profit and loss mechanism and then understand where we need to increase or if we are talking a decrease in employees or maybe, I, I don't want to go there, but I mean, so we understand realistically what, what we're dealing with. And then I just had one other. I needed one other thing clarified, Sheri, that you had stated on the 2024 budget top line, general levy, levy, general fund, that whole amount, $6,954,139 is for the police and fire department?
Just the police and fire department alone.
Okay. So how did, in 2023, when it was 5,296,843, what did that encompass?
That did not cover. We've never covered our police and fire operating budget in the general fund.
But so where did that, you would almost have?
Came from the other part down here in $10,000,300. It came in from local government aid, municipal tachonite aid, any other revenue, the, the general fund helped support that.
So I mean, we only got, we didn't get that much of an increase in LGA, but when we had a 2023 budget of 5,296,843, what all did that encompass? Because in, in my mind then, you would actually be, I mean, your, your budget is almost, your levy amount is probably going to be similar. It's similar in 2022. So what, wouldn't it make sense to take your police and fire and add that to that number? That's, that's what I feel is realistic. Like otherwise, where, where is that 23 budget? Where did that go? How are we funding that? If we're adding, we're taking the 2023 budget and then we're adding police and fire into that and you're saying that police and fire alone is an additional 6.954 million that should be in and addition to?
No, the general fund operating levy never covered the police and fire. So I don't know, Britt, if you can explain it better.
Yeah. And then, and thankfully, I kind of, that one graph I did that says levy historic that shows you the police-fire streets. And I, I put those public safety and the streets on there specifically because that came up as a topic, that that's what our citizens want us to pay for, is they want streets, they want street, police and fire. And I just wanted to point out that there, there's never been a time where we've ever had the levy equal the amount of police and fire even, and much less the streets. So thankfully, for all these years, we've had LGA, we've had municipal tachonite aid, we've had grants, we've had licenses and permits and fees and grant, more grants and more grants and more grants. I mean, that's where we've gotten by was with grants. And as we heard last year, we didn't get all those grants yet because the projects haven't started yet. So we didn't get the grants for the street projects that we were supposed to get. We put the money out, but we haven't got the grant back yet. For the public safety center, we put the money out and we haven't got the grant back yet. So we have all this money out there and that's why we had a fund balance decrease last year is because all this money is sitting out there in these projects that we haven't got paid back yet from grants. And we've been living off grants for 20 years since I started working here in 1999. We've been living off grants since 1999 and we just thankfully haven't had a problem until last year.
So thank you for that. That helps a little bit. But now going, if I look at your graph, it's still, it also doesn't have in there because we've never had either the Iron Trail Motors Event Center.
Because that's a special revenue fund. That's completely separate from, up until 2029, 2021, we had recreation, right, a million dollars in the miners' building. So the million dollars for the miners was in there through 2021.
Okay. So that, then that does make.
That's why that small decrease, that one year where you used to use that lip down because we took the miners out.
Got it. Okay. So, but do you understand what I was saying?
Yeah.
Like, how can we increase, if you're saying the police department's total budget, police and fire is 6.9?
Yes.
Why doesn't that add on to the 2023 5.2? Because that's all of our services, all of our everything combined.
The 5.2 did include the police and fire, just never covered. I mean, we, that would be too much of an increase for the city. I mean, we'd be, that'd be a hell.
Right. But I'm just saying, I guess I'm not understanding how, how we're operating then.
Again, still, still on grants and still on hopes and prayers that we're going to, yeah.
Okay.
Because that's what we've done. And that's what, it's just not, I know my, taxpayers don't want to hear we're going to do a, you know, 100% levy increase. That's not feasible. It's just not going to happen.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for the time.
Thank you, Councillor Paulson. So I'm going to just make one more comment and, and I'm done. You know, we have services that we provide to the city of Virginia and our employees are professional employees, just like they are in some of the other private businesses. They perform a function, they do outstanding work for that. It's not the employees' issue here. This is a budget issue for us. If we want quality services, we need to invest in our employees, which we've done, professional employees. Employees that work here are career-minded employees. They provide the services we all need and expect. All our core services group, police, fire, public works, parking rack, all the, you know, all, even the, even the ancillary services, library, they all provide high-quality services. And so when we look at what we have to do with our levy based upon our expenditures, we talked about whether we have to cut or what we have to do here, what we have to do there, maybe the, each budget has to be tightened a little bit. And I think Sheri and Britt has done that. They've met with all the department heads, they've gone through all these, these budget issues, they've gone through their expenditures and analysis and asked them to cut whatever they can for 2024. We just have fund deficits that we can't control on the outside unless you want to get rid of those services. So I'm here to say that that's not where I stand. We have core services, we need to keep those core services. We have professional employees, we need to keep those professional employees. If we want those services, we have to pay for those services. It's easy for me to say that, you know, when people are paying really high taxes, when they're getting hit by the school district, they're getting hit by the, the St. Louis County, when they're going around Virginia, Minnesota again this year, reevaluating everybody's properties. But the bottom line is, we have a budget and the budget is to, is to constitute the service that we provide. So to peel away the onion, one of the two things happens. We either raise the levy, X amount of dollars, or we don't raise the levy, we lose levy and the only other place to do it is cut expenditures is through equipment purchases and staff. So if somebody from the general public has a solution, hey, I'm ready to hear it. What is your solution moving forward? I'd love to hear that. I've got emails about it, but it's mostly concerns, rumors, and, and yes, some visceral complaints as well about how inept we are as a city, how inept our employees are, how inept our the city council is, how inept our staff is. Not true. It's an emotional response. If you have, if anybody has a suggestion, a remedy, a solution, we're happy to hear it. I'm happy to hear it. And I, we'd like to hear that from you. We're just, elected officials trying to do the best job we can. And if we're not doing the job we need to do and we, and we're missing something, if you have a solution, I'd like, we'd like to hear it. There's no question about that. So anybody else right now from the council that they have to speak, and then we'll, we'll ask somebody, if somebody behind them wants to speak, we'll let you come in and talk if you like and make your comments or whatever you like to do. We welcome those things. Councillor Friedle?
I'll try to be succinct, which I pride myself in. In referencing some of the information provided to us from the audit from Walker, Drew and Hahn, they indicated, and I'll paraphrase, that they paraphrase, that they did not become aware of any significant deficiencies and material weaknesses in our budgetary oversight, but rather became aware of matters that are opportunities for strengthening internal controls and operating efficiencies. And I believe that we, as a council, and with the educational experience that we have on the professional staff, we will find our way through this and out of this in a way that will benefit the citizens of this community, and everybody that has the concerns that they have that are legitimate after the report that we were given. But they found things in here that give us opportunity for improvement, and I believe we have the people that are capable of doing that. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Friedle. Okay, let's open it up. Anybody from the audience wants to come and speak, please come forward. Turn the green light on on the microphone, and please state your name for the record, and welcome to the city council meeting.
Good afternoon. My name is Wendy Summers, and I am a former accounting clerk III for the city of Virginia. And I'm not exactly sure how to start, but the way that this budget is done, I've always had an issue with it, because it combines all the funds together. And you really need to separate out between the general fund, every single special revenue fund, every single debt service fund, and each enterprise fund. So you know exactly which fund has a deficit. I had received draft number five, draft number three a week or two ago, and I kind of put something together that I had created before. And based on that, the general fund alone was, had a deficit balance of, budgeting a deficit balance of over $2 million. Now, you've increased it, but there still is a deficit of over $1 million from what I have interpreted from this budget. And just, you know, talking about Julianne, this transfer from reserves to general fund, that is not revenue. That is reducing your fund balance. You need to address that. We've been budgeting deficits for so many years, and it keeps happening, year after year, transfer from reserves. There is no reserves there to transfer from. It's not additional income coming in. And with that, I really think you need to lay it out differently than this, so you can see each fund, each special revenue fund, enterprise funds. Lay it out separately, so you know exactly where the deficits are, and then budget from there.
Thank you, Wendy. Anyone else? Please come forward. Turn the green light, if it's not on, state your name for the record, and welcome to the budget meeting.
My name's Amanda Metz. I'm a labor rep for AFSME. And I just wanted to address a couple of things that I see within this budget and within this conversation. And I think what concerns me most, as I hear potential solutions or conversation being tossed around the council, is that the council seems to be speaking to a small number of voices that have raised concerns, and they seem to be speaking in platitudes that are kind of good soundbites, you know, to those tax-concerned citizens, but don't reflect the reality of staffing, or the costs, or the things associated with that. So we've, we've heard different council members throughout this conversation, both in meetings or kind of behind-the-scenes conversations that take place latch on to the idea of staffing as a potential problem within the city. And I heard a couple of numbers cited today, including the council and the mayor asking about the total number of employees, and the total number, basically, the answers you're getting are the total number of names on your roster. But they do not reflect the total number of FTEs or full-time equivalents. So one of those examples that was brought up today was the library, and saying that the library has 12 employees, and that's potentially too many. However, what that doesn't reflect is that two of those are casuals who work an extremely limited number of hours, two are part-timers, and one of those names, I believe, in the total, if I've done my math right, is an intern. Right? So you are not staffed at an FTE level of 12 FTEs within that building. The library, like most departments, which AFSME represents, is actually very lean, right, on staff. If you're trying to cover what you need to cover within a building, vacations, sick leave, those sorts of things that occur. You know, we, we had, we've had conversations about ITMAC, and concern about what ITMAC staff are doing in times where there's not two rinks of ice. We've, we've heard that constituents are upset that their mowing, like, was brought up today on the weekends, and is that being done on overtime? And ITMAC and parks are another great example of where staff are used across that line to fulfill the needs of the city in a way that is beneficial and that is not, you know, producing additional expense. Your department directors are the ones who need to be involved in this process and to be answering to the needs of their departments, because ultimately, this is a question about needs. And I think it seems that there's kind of a reaction to the panic about this audit, rather than the facts of the services that the city is expected to provide, and the, you know, what, how many staff are needed to provide those services. As a constituent, I also live in Virginia. I have questions about what an increased levy means, like anybody else. But we're not sitting here today talking about real numbers. Why? You know, as a constituent, talk to me about what that looks like. That's what I want to know, and that is something that I think most taxpayers are willing to weigh if they have that fact. The numbers that I've seen, you know, reflect a small increase, because you're still not, I believe the answer, so you're still not at your 100% levy for St. Louis County with your current levy. And so the idea that the council is sitting, and seems to be moving towards an argument here, or at least some council members, that no levy increase is acceptable, doesn't seem to reflect any sort of reality. Everything is increasing. Costs are increasing for your departments. You have increased needs. And where you have those needs that are kind of the most dramatic, in departments like ITMAC, first of all, you had budgeted deficits already, right, and understood deficits of $1 million a year that you, you expected to be running. But two, it's a perfect example of needing to spend money to make money. You have to have those staff in place to produce revenue. And so when we're talking about cutting staff, we're talking about reduced services in one of the only two public spaces available to citizens in the winter, and you're talking about potentially losing further revenue and digging the hole deeper. And so from a, you know, a labor upside, I'm concerned about where this conversation is going, and how the council could potentially, or even propose decreasing staff. But from a citizen's side as well, I think that there's nowhere to go but to have this conversation about what do the, what does the increased cost get us? And to have that transparently would be beneficial to everyone in Virginia, not, not only your employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Couple of things. First of all, this is the very first budget meeting with the council. Staff has worked diligently with this, with the, with the department heads and the employees to come up with a budget. This is a proposed budget, this is a draft budget, this is the first discussion about a budget. We'll have a lot more. And in answer to your question about real numbers, we'll get those real numbers at the next budget meeting. But we're here to, to discuss a framework with respect to that. So I appreciate that. They're all, everything's on the table. The reason I ask for a number of employees from 2022 to 2023 is to show that we haven't increased our staff significantly at all. It's been the same. So the expenditure side isn't necessarily as a result of the amount of employees we have or the salary and benefit packs we pay. It's something we have to look at in the future with respect to how we generate additional revenue and to accommodate the budget. And I thank Wendy for coming forward and making a suggestion about how we separate those out. I think we do get some of that information internally about that, so we'll look at those things as well. But the bottom line is, we have a city to run, we have services to provide. And if the citizens of this community, and I think the majority do, want this level of services, we have to, we have to continue to provide it. So, there's a lot more I could say, but I think that this is the first budget meeting. We'll have more, and get some real numbers, and then take a look at separating out some of those departments, to make it easier for the citizens of Virginia to understand. So, does anybody have anything else you'd like to disseminate at this first budget meeting? Please come forward. Thank you. With the green light is on, please state your name for the record, and welcome to the budget meeting.
Thank you very much. My name is Jan McCosky. I live here in Virginia. I have been coming to just about every meeting for the last two years. There has been many questions asked when a proposal comes forward to purchase something. Where's the money coming from? And it's always been told, oh, we have the money. Well, despite what some people think, the snapshot in time of the audit also shows we didn't have the money, or it was mismanaged somehow. I'm real disappointed that today's meeting was not televised. I was told it was to not create panic amongst staff and citizens. Well, you know what creates panic? Not having information. And they are not going to get all the information necessary, either through rumor, Facebook, whatever it may be. People have a right to hear all of this information, and I'm very disappointed that it isn't being televised. I hope that future meetings are televised. Thank you.
Yeah, future meetings, thank you, Ms. McCosky. Future meetings will be televised. We want to have a roundtable discussion with our department heads as well. So we'll have more significant numbers. We'll make sure that we have that available for you and answer the questions that you have. And so, okay. Anybody else have anything they'd like to add before we close out the budget meeting? Please state your name for the record, and welcome to the budget meeting.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Laura Summers-Bachschneider, and I was one of those ones who did send an email out to the council and mayor. The way I viewed the audit report was maybe a little different than some others. I really viewed it as a wake-up call. I really view it as an opportunity for you all to take that as an opportunity, to ask a lot of questions, verify those answers, and to hopefully make some changes in how things are going. I find it frustrating that we always are told as citizens, please reach out, please send us an email, please come to meetings, please ask questions, please express your thoughts, and that from some people, it appears as though when we do, those thoughts are offensive, we're rude, and that we're either dismissed, not responded to, or we're treated in a condescending way because we have a contrary opinion to what you have, and not appreciated. This, this is a serious matter. Your own staff has said to you today that, they have concerns. Please listen to them as well. You know, as Ms. C. Bennett said, that this was an unusual year, you know, and that the grants, hopes, prayers was what she had said. And, and I think we all share that as well, and we really do hope that those grants come through. And none of us want things to go bad. We're all on the same team. I think you all forget that. When I'm, when I'm at home watching these meetings at night, seems to be girls against the boys a lot of the time. And you guys have to get on the same team. We really want the same thing. We, nobody wants it to end badly. You guys really, you really need to get together. This is a wake-up call, and please get together, please talk, please get this right. Nobody, nobody wants it to end badly. Everyone wants the same thing. So please ask those questions, please verify those answers, and please, please, just make it so it's good to live here, and that our budget is good, and that it's open, and people can communicate. And if, and if really, at the end of the day, if what you're getting out of things, like, you know, that it's about a $25 rental, it's not. It's about precedence. It's about being fair. It's about being honest and forthcoming and being transparent. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we look forward to you scheduling the next budget meeting, coming forward. And you'll have some more detailed numbers for everybody. And so, and at the next budget meeting, we'll have, we'll make sure that they're televised and, and be as transparent as possible. And we do try to be as transparent as possible. And we are cognizant of the fact of what we need. We do have the citizens of the best city in mind, despite maybe your opinion to the contrary. So, Councilor Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. So, just for clarification, the next step is we need to set a maximum levy by the end of the month. Is that correct?
By September 30th, yes.
And that number can be, to Amanda's point, you know, we could set the levy increase at 50%, cover ourselves, and then we can walk it backwards before the end of the year? Or when-
December 30th.
Pardon me?
Before December 30th.
Okay. So, so, and I think that's one of the things that creates angst, is when a council sets a high levy, because we don't know, and we don't have time, and it's a process. And I know, I've been sitting here for seven years, that's always been, we don't want to set it too high, because we don't want people coming at us. But I think the reality of it is, is that we do need to set a high preliminary levy, so that we can do the hard work in the next two months before we have to get it to what is exactly right. I too want the numbers of how much it's going to cost me. If I can equate, in the generalist sense of the term, my taxes, my levy taxes, I know, are going to public safety. That's a lot easier to palate, to swallow than, well, it's just going to the general fund. And I know that's semantics when it comes to the world of, of accounting and what it looks like, but then there's something we can talk about. We can talk about that it does cost us $9 million a year just to provide public safety. And that's what your taxes, that's why your taxes are set here. And then we, hopes and prayers or whatever for, for streets and alleys and that kind of stuff. So I just want to make sure that, that the general public knows that, yes, there is a, that there's going to be a preliminary levy set, and then we continue to work through the end of the year to get that to exactly what we need it to be moving forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Councilor Johnson. So before we adjourn, is there anything else anyone would like to add? Councilor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. So on our sheets, draft number five, I do not see a proposed, I guess, levy percent. So could I get, could we get that, or what is the exact percent we're being asked to consider? I know the last, like, the last couple, couple weeks ago, it was at 11%. Now where are we?
Okay. Basically, the levy is a dollar amount. Percentage doesn't mean that if it's 10% or 11%, doesn't mean your taxes are going to go up 11% or 10%. It's a dollar amount we're requesting.
Right.
So the difference between 2023's levy of $5,296,843, and the proposed to meet the police and fire department budgets is about 31%.
Thank you, Sheri.
Thank you, Sheri. Thank you, Councilor Paulson. Okay, anybody else? Okay. All right, well, let's set another budget meeting as, pardon? Okay, we're setting a budget meeting as soon as we can. We'll make sure that everybody gets the invite, as always. We'll make sure that it's televised. We should have some specific numbers for everybody moving forward. So hopefully, we'll get closer to having a final preliminary budget with a levy decision before the 30th of September. And so, and I would urge, and we urge you, if you have any other solutions, please do not hesitate to reach out. I beg to differ with you, Ms. Bachschneider, that I answer every email, and I'm very professional about it. And have we all, I think, have the trust and faith in our citizens to, if they have an opinion, you should provide it. If they have a solution, we should look at it. You're part of this team, just everybody else, and you live and work here. You need to have all the answers that you need moving forward. So we hope to have that done. Councilor Biondich.
Thank you. I just would like to thank everybody who attended today's meeting, and for those who spoke. It means a lot. It means a lot to know that our community is invested in this. So thank you for coming forward.
Okay, thank you, everybody. So, Councilor Paulson.
Just one final thing. When we do go forward with the, thank you, Mayor. When we do go forward with the setting of the next meeting, could we have included in our package- do go forward with the setting of the next meeting, could we have included in our packet all of the departments, the budget breakdowns for 20, the draft proposals for each department for 2024, also including the new updated percentage of levy increase? So we have all of that in one email. Thank you so much.
And I think I won't go so far as to maybe try to provide the breakdown, that Wendy Summers asked if we can do that somehow, have that available, make it easier for all of us to understand. Britt?
I do have one other thing if that's okay.
Yes, please, Britt.
The other sheet that I handed out in your packet was our capital equipment bond list. From the earlier meeting today, the nine o'clock meeting, we tabled, not tabled, we moved the item number six, which is approve the quote for purchase of a new camera system at the library from Permar, which is a capital equipment bond request. As you see in that list, we did budget for that in the capital equipment bond, and that bond can only be paid for those things that are on that list, it can't be used for anything else. So I just wanted to reassure you that number six was covered in that bond, and it's actually cheaper than we expected. We thought it was something between $18,000 and it was really 12, so it was better than we thought. But just a heads up, so when we approve it next week, or the next committee of the whole, it is there.
Okay.
Can we move that forward in this meeting right now?
Yes.
Sure, well, this isn't a special, is this a special budget meeting? Yeah, we can do that, we can make a motion if you'd like, Councilor Paulson.
Thank you, and thank you, Britt, for providing, the minute I saw it, I highlighted it, and I realized we have the funds. So I would like to go ahead and, that would have been item number four on our Committee of the Whole Agenda Packet, to approve the cameras, the security cameras and the amount of.
$12,061.
Thank you.
From Permar Incorporated.
For Permar Security. And that also includes a lease payment of one?
Two, one hundred something a month for the maintenance.
The maintenance.
Yep.
Thank you.
Hey, Councilor Paulson makes a motion from the original Committee of the Whole Agenda, item number four, under Building and Grounds, to approve the quote for the purchase of new camera system at the library for, from Permar in the amount of $12,061, plus the monthly maintenance fee, and it was always, also already concluded in the equipment bond, looking for support.
Support.
Worked by Councilor Motley, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Okay. Pam, our city clerk, Pam.
Thank you, Mayor. So we also did have a couple additions for the food truck festival, to approve some transient merchants, one-day transient merchants, since we don't have another meeting before Saturday, if we could approve those.
Okay, would you read them out, and then we'll get a motion individually from each one?
One is for Randy Chris Demogola, doing business as Domo's Donuts, and Kevin White, doing business as K&amp;B Grill Cheese.
Can we do that in one motion? Okay, Councilor Biondich, to approve, is there support? By Councilor Motley, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, two more food trucks to choose from. All right, thank you, every, thank you, everybody, for coming. If you have any other questions, comments, please do not hesitate to reach out, and please look forward to the next budget meeting. Thank you. We stand adjourned.